Good evening, everyone. I call to order the Board of Education Regular Board Meeting of April 11, 2023. Ms. Trahill, are there any requests to squeak from the public on closed item session? Next, here and then, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for being here. I want to welcome you to the board meeting of the Unified Board of Trustees. This is a meeting, a board meeting in the public, and we want to make sure that we have respectful decorum here. And also with regards to the aisles, we want to make sure they're clear because we want to be safe. And we don't, you know, if we need to get out, we can all get out safely. So we'll make sure that we're doing that, be mindful of that. Again, again, this is the board meeting, and there's time to speak that we have associated for that, so please respect those pieces with regards to that. And so again, I want to thank you all here to participate in this board meeting. But again, we want to make sure we have respectful decorum of this meeting so that people are heard and we can move forward through this process. And again, this is not a ballgame, so we're not, if you need to, we want to do that silently so people get heard and we don't get interrupted and the meeting goes forward. So with that, we are opening up the meeting tonight, and so we'll go to Language Access.
Thank you, Board President Simsmotin. Good evening, everybody. We have Spanish interpretation available in person and through Zoom. And we also have ASL interpretation available through Zoom, and it has a new feature. Zoom has a new feature for ASL. So if you click on Language Interpretation, it'll give you the option to select ASL interpretation. So it will spotlight our ASL interpreters. So that is the announcement for tonight, and I will also repeat it in Spanish. Muy buenas noches. Tenemos interpretación al español disponible en persona y por medio de Zoom. Así que si necesitan equipo de interpretación, tenemos el equipo en la parte de atrás en la mesa. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Maldonado, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An announcement from closed session. In the case of 2023020741, the board voted to ratify the March 23, 2023, final settlement agreement. The vote was 5-0. Now we'll move to the Student Board Member Report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Just a few things to report on on my end from the last time that we met as a board. We had a very successful film screening of Repairing the World. We also had the opportunity to hear from a number of students, including myself, from the different high schools. And it was a really great opportunity for us to connect with our educators, connect with our school administrators and the district cabinet to really reimagine what we see here at Santa Barbara Unified, but also globally, the climate that we're going to create, the environment we're going to create, and also each making sure that we're going to be doing our part, holding ourselves accountable, to ensure that we foster a climate of love, of inclusion, of prosperity, and eliminate the hate and the division that exists between us solely in a difference of understanding and perspective. I'm really excited to hopefully make this kind of like a tradition, hopefully have it set a precedent for the work that we do, the spotlighting of voices that we continue to do. And I'm really grateful that I had the opportunity to be a part of that. And follow up, we have our Student Advisory Council meeting on April 19, where we'll talk more about the significance of the documentary, the panel, and how we can make sure to continue events like that in the future. And as I mentioned at the last board meeting, the election process for the next student board member is underway. We have elected the candidate from San Marcos High School. DP and SB are soon to follow, and a candidate from La Cuesta will also be appointed shortly. So that's also very exciting. And I also do want to take this time to address the incident that occurred on April 3 at San Marcos High School. We very much prioritize student safety, student well-being. And so if there's any person that you feel like you need to talk to, we have counselors, social workers, FSA therapists, and other mental health professionals on campus available if you need more information. Dr. Maldonado sent out a message on Parent Square with more information on how to understand your school's safety plan, your school's safety protocol. And please don't hesitate to reach out to any school administrators or any school teachers or any adult that you feel safe talking to on campus to better debrief the situation. It is traumatizing. It is difficult, but we need to make sure that we're leaning into our community, leaning into our support systems in this process in order to recover from that. And I also do want to take this time to just give a special shout out to all of the incredible people in our audience. I would not be who I am without the teachers that I've had.
I want to remind us, I want to remind us, I want to remind us, so that we can, please be respectful of that. I really want to remind us because that interrupts the meeting and we're not able to move through to make sure that we're hearing from you, so appreciate that.
With that, thank you all so much, and I conclude my comments.
That next moves us to the Superintendent Report.
Good evening, everyone, board members. I'll start off with talking about a conference attended in DC on clean energy over the break, over the spring break. And one of the things that I learned about the work that we've been doing in our school district around microgrids and solar energy is that we are on the leading edge when it comes to the nation in looking at sustainability efforts that will really look at improving our finances, but also the opportunities as all of the technology and all the ways that we can do better by leaving a better world for some of our younger people with the use of clean energy. With that said, we are going to be restarting our Sustainability Committee. Part of the committee's work will be to assist with the baseline measurement of our school district's environmental impact and goals. We're going to be looking into the Green Ribbon Schools Program, which collects information and provides guidelines for how we can submit for a Green Ribbon Program Award. But all of that really means is how we're going to be looking deep into how we can make cuts in the way that we use energy and hopefully helps our bottom line as well in addition to providing a safer environment. I also want to inform the board that Capital Advisors Group is presenting their May Revision Budget Perspectives Workshop on May 26 at 9:00 AM for Santa Barbara County. It's an in-person workshop and the auditorium, and if you have a chance, please go. We will be hearing a lot about the revisions that the governor will be making and the kinds of budget projections that we can be looking at for the future. I want to do a special shout out to Pepper Marks, Santa Barbara High School's wrestler, who is one of the best wrestlers in the country. She finished as an All-American and came in eighth place at a national competition in Virginia Beach. We are so proud of her and her coach, who helped her get to that title. I also want to congratulate our Board President Wendy Simsmotin on being elected as a delegate to CSBA until 2025 as a Central Coast Delegate, so congratulations to you. Next, and I believe I have, I'm going to try to look through the crowd for our facilities. We want to recognize Foreman David Chon Benitez. Is he here? And Foreman Enrique Perez, if you can come up, and John Wickman from the Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing Shop. We asked the three gentlemen to come in today, and I want to ask you to join me in congratulating them. Our facilities maintenance team on completing 5,112 work orders and counting this school year. This team consists of trades personnel in several major maintenance shops. And again, they're represented today, they're representing the grounds and operations shop, the light construction shop, the mechanical engineering and plumbing shop. They have been working around the clock tirelessly responding to both regular maintenance requests and troubles caused by this winter's wet weather. We want the whole facilities team, and I think I see Marina and JJ are here as well. You guys stand up. We want to thank them all. We know that their work, their hard work is, we want them to know that their hard work is noticed and appreciated. And we want some, we have some certificates to present to them. Marina, if you can do us the honor to please join us. And I don't have them here. I have the counselors here. I don't, oh, there we go. Adriana has them for you. So gentlemen, if you could please express our gratitude and recognition to your, to the teams that you represent. And board members, again, 5,112 orders completed, and we're not done with the school year yet, but they've met all those requests, so please join me in thanking them.
Thank you so much, Dr. Maldonado. Board members, Executive Cabinet, thank you very much. I'd like to present this certificate to our entire maintenance and grounds team, and I'm glad that JJ is here to accept it. JJ is our facilities supervisor, working very hard every day, taking care of all emergency, non-emergency work orders, any kind of requests and any calls associated or not associated with facilities. We're here to talk to you and to help you. That's what JJ does every day. Thank you. And to your team. So this certificate will go to David Chon Benitez to congratulate his grounds team on the excellent work every day, taking care of grounds in elementary schools and all secondary school support in case they need it on any day and with all equipment and fleet maintenance and other services, all operations that are, you know, related to the grounds. Thank you so much, David Chon. And we have our new light construction foreman here, Enrique Perez. Congratulations on being promoted to this job. Thank you very much for being here, and this is for your team and for your hard work taking care of all the light construction projects and other work orders. And our electrical HVAC person is not here, but I'll take it on his behalf. Thank you so much.
Board members, next, I want to also acknowledge the, an event, I feel like it's been a while since we've had a meeting. Nearly 300 Santa Barbara Unified students signed up for dual enrollment at Santa Barbara City College during events throughout March called the Vaquero Roundup, which showed students and their families opportunities to take classes as SBCC over the summer, in person, online, and at high schools. High school and junior high school counselors were available onsite to assist and provide guidance on selecting a course, completing the course approvals, and clearing prerequisites. Peak staff was also on hand to help make sure we had assistance to sign up students in English and Spanish. I know it's been a long time since I've been to college, and it is very difficult to enroll, and it was so, I had a chance to go and visit and see how much our counselors were doing to really help walk families and students through the process. You see a picture here of the peak staff. They were, they had dinner for the families as well, and there was people troubleshooting on the Santa Barbara City College on one end of the room, and on the other end of the room, we had the counselors talking with the families, explaining how this all was going to work out for our students, and it was great to see a diverse group of people there as well. So it was very well attended, and I want to express my gratitude to both the peak staff and the counselors for this work. Next, I wanted to let you know that last week, I had a chance to address the Santa Barbara County Board of Education along with Dawson Kelly, our former student board member of San Marcos High School, Hannah Huang and Ava Chavestari from Dos Pueblos High School, who spoke about their experience on the inaugural SBCEO Student Advisory Council. So just like we have a Student Advisory Council, which Kavya and I co-lead, here at Santa Barbara Unified, they took that model, and they're now doing it at the county level as well. And we were also joined by San Inez Valley Union High School Ada Degollado, who spoke to the board, and we're so proud of the work these students are doing to support education, not just in the Santa Barbara community, but throughout our county. And it's a model for really looking at what Kavya talked about, which is centering the student voices. And there's a picture of all of us. Next, we have, I believe, the counseling team from Dos Pueblos High School is here. If you can also come up. I'm going to move down to the dais to recognize this group. And you also have a little explanation of this group for you to read about. So I have the Dos Pueblos High School Counseling Team has been recognized for the ASCA Model Program, which recognizes schools committed to delivering comprehensive data-informed school counseling programs aligned with the ASCA. Yeah, you guys can stand. You'll eventually stand over there. I know, it's a small room. We're like. The ramp designation demonstrates to administrators, school boards, families in the community at large that the schools are committed to supporting the mission of the school and the district. The DPHS counseling team is only the ninth high school in California to earn this distinction. The team will be sharing some of the work they have been doing that helped them earn this prestigious award. And so for, to thank them, I have some certificates as well. And let's see, I have here, we'll start with Rebecca, Rebecca Bucher, did I pronounce that correctly? Booker. Yefat Cummings. Spencer Barr. Okay, we'll take it. I do want to say a special word for Spencer Barr because I did see Spencer at the SBCC event that I talked about earlier, board members, and I, people were whispering, Spencer Barr is like the guru of getting kids enrolled in SBCC, so I just want to do a special shout out. Suzie Stone. Alisa Hashmet. Did I put that correct? Scott Guntag, not here. Yeah, Scott's probably running a club. Yeah. Nancy Gomez. And last, Elizabeth Dominguez. Thank you. Okay. So we can just stand by the board, and we'll take a quick picture. And board members, again, we want to thank and congratulate the DPHS board. Okay, I'm almost done, I promise. We also have next our.
Are we presenting now?
Did you want to say a few words?
Is that okay? We have a quick slideshow?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. And so, good evening, Dr. Maldonado, board members, district leaders, and our community. My name is Rebecca Booker, and I'm a counselor at Dos Pueblos High School. I'm here with a few other counselors who will introduce themselves in a moment, and we are here this evening on behalf of all the Santa Barbara Unified School counselors, many of whom are here tonight as well. We are excited to appear before you today to share some highlights of the work the school counselors have accomplished over the past few years. First, I am proud to announce that the Dos Pueblos High School Counseling Team was awarded for the RAMP Recognized ASCA Model Program, which you mentioned. And as you also mentioned, we are one of only nine high schools in California that have earned this designation. So this model process, this application process, is the culmination of successfully implementing the ASCA National Model. The National Model is a framework that outlines the components of a school counseling program that are integral to the school's academic mission, and it's created to have a significant positive impact on student achievement, attendance, and discipline.
Great. Yeah, if we can stay on this slide. I'm Suzie Stone, and I am also a counselor at Dos Pueblos. The RAMP designation is one way that counselors demonstrate our commitment to supporting the mission of our schools and district. We are here today to thank the board and district leadership for supporting the work of school counselors across Santa Barbara Unified. The commitment from this body provided professional development and training to all SBUSD junior high and high school counselors with hatching results, beginning in 2016 to this present school year. Dr. Trish Hatch is one of the co-authors of the ASCA National Model and a leader in the field of school counseling. This training has allowed SBUSD counselors to align our counseling curriculum across all schools to ensure that school counselors help every student apply academic achievement strategies, manage emotions, and apply interpersonal skills, and plan for post-secondary options such as higher education, the military, or the workforce. Next slide.
Good evening. I am Tara Enrico. I am a counselor at San Marcos High School. So the work the counselors do is aligned with the district's student-centered goals, including MTSS, or Multi-Tierred System of Support. Next slide. So more specifically, we call our work MTMDSS, since we work within the three multi-tiered systems of support, but we do that work across the three school counseling domains, academic, college and career, and social emotional. As you can see here, Tier One is the work we do with all students, such as four-year planning meetings, scheduling, parent nights, and core curriculum. Tier Two is for our targeted students needing extra support through things such as student study teams, 504 plans, and referrals to mental health. And then finally, our Tier Three, which is our most intensive outreach for students needing things such as referrals to outside agencies or individual counseling. Next slide, please.
My name's Austin Roman. I'm a school counselor here at La Colina. Counselors created the District Handbook, which serves as a reference guide to counselors and administrators. This also serves as a training tool for new counselors. Over the years, this has created a guaranteed curriculum by grade level across all sites. Examples would be our Signs of Suicide for emotional, or for social emotional awareness, as well as our new Career Cruising Program called Zello. This ensures our district is aligned and unified together as a whole, so every student will receive the same counseling curriculum at each grade level. Thank you.
Next slide. Thank you. So we'd like to share a few successes across the district since the implementation of the ASCA Model in 2017. And we recognize these successes are not solely because of counselors, but the work we do directly and indirectly affects student outcomes and achievement in all three domains, academic, college, career, and social emotional. So the first success highlighted here, as we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, DP earned RAMP status this year, but also Galita Valley Junior High was the first school in our district to earn RAMP status in 2021. The first graph in the top left shows an increase in 7th, 9th, and 11th grades in identifying a caring adult at school. School connectedness and trusted adults has been a goal at many of our school sites over the past few years. The second graph on the bottom left shows an increase across the district in A through G college eligibility rates from 51% to 62%. In addition, not shown here, our Latinx students have increased their A through G eligibility from 33% to 48% since 2017. The third graph on the top right shows an increase in graduation rates across the district from 88% to 95% since 2017, and our Latinx students have increased from 85% to 94%. And the final graph on the bottom right shows the increase in FAFSA and Dream Act completion over the past few years since the addition of the college and career counselors at the high schools. These financial aid applications are required for students to earn any financial aid and many scholarships in college, and it's also required for the SBCC Promise. As of March, there are already at least 200 more seniors and families that have completed the FAFSA and Dream Act than two years ago. And I should point out that although the A through G graduation and FAFSA completion rates are measured in 12th grade, the education and preparation starts all the way back in junior high.
Last slide. Because your leadership has placed additional school counselors at all secondary sites as well as college and career counselors at all high schools, you have helped us support our students and their families more effectively with lower counselor-to-student ratios. Thank you again for recognizing and supporting our work and allowing us to share with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your great work. And we know that many of students like myself also benefit a lot from counselors who helped us, guided, guided us in a new way of thinking, especially those of us that are first-generation college graduates, so thank you. With that, I'd like to close my report with our Heroes of the Heart, which is, as you know, our way of acknowledging, and this is a way that every single one of us in the school system gets to nominate someone that really displays the values that we hold near and dear to our hearts. So we'll start with our first nominee from Monroe Elementary School, nominated by Principal Brian Naughton, Sally. Sally has gone the extra mile to support our students with special needs. She stepped up to provide leadership for all of our moderate to severe students. Congratulations and thank you, Sally Delacer. Next, we have from Franklin Elementary School, nominated by Patty Coronado, Ariana Garcia Olivo. Ariana is going out of her way to find different resources for Franklin families and staff when they need it. She goes above and beyond to help others, no matter what it is. Thank you so much, Ariana, for doing that for our families. From La Cumbre, nominated by Israel Vega, Kendall Stevens, who's also, as you know, one of our County Teachers of the Year. Ms. Stevens goes beyond the scope of her job to ensure each one of her students is being given the equal amount of attention to help them succeed in her classroom. She's also the ASB advisor and helps plan after-school activities for students to enjoy. From Santa Barbara High School, nominated by Dr. Simmons Javier Acosta. He does an amazing job of keeping the campus clean and beautiful, and I know that many of us who go there know that we would agree. In December, he helped to make sure that the Santa Barbara High School Day of Beautification went off without a hitch. So thank you, Javier. From Dos Pueblos High School, nominated by Kelly Savio, we have Chrissy Cable. Chrissy's always ready with suggestions on how to adapt curriculum for our students in special education, and she knows just how to break down a lesson into manageable pieces or how to explain things in just the right way. Thank you, Chrissy. Sounds like a great, great teacher. San Marcos High School, nominated by Eliana, is Eredia Rocha. She is a dedicated teacher who is passionate about teaching our Spanish students and is quick to answer emails. Good, I'll need some, some help with that. From Washington Elementary, nominated by Lou Gonzalez, is Alexandra Angelopoulos. Ms. A is a great first-grade teacher at Washington School. She's very nice, caring, energetic, and loved by her students. Ms. A makes great memory books with students' work and photos. Thank you. From Santa Barbara High School, nominated by Donovan Wariker, is Mr. Nick Eric Nicholson. Mr. Nick is an amazing, caring, and hard-working specialist teacher. He truly cares about his students and is a pillar of the Special Education Department at Santa Barbara High. From Santa, from our school district, from our school district office, nominated by Roxanna Stern, is the Warehouse Crew. This small but mighty crew makes sure our schools receive everything needed to support our students and staff, ranging from food and cafeteria supplies to classroom materials, furniture, and even COVID test kits. These dedicated workers are out in the field every day making their deliveries and collecting district mail. Thank you, Warehouse Crew. And the last one for tonight, and I had a chance to go and experience this myself this year for the first time, the La Colina 7th Grade Social Studies Team, nominated by Ms. Jen Foster, Principal Foster. I have to admit that I did call her and say, are you going to nominate them, or am I? Because I had a chance again to see the, for the first time there, their project called A Walk Through the Middle Ages, where students in 7th grade research projects and create living history exhibits. 470 7th graders participated, hundreds of elementary students, parents, family, and community members learn from these students. This would not be possible without the dedication of Mr. Burkholt, Ms. Lane, Mr. Marquez, and Ms. Stevens, and I'm so honored that they also invited me. And because of the rain that did get, it did have to be changed to another day, we made the buses work, and it still happened, and they reminded me that it was changed. So I want to thank them and a special shout out to this team who I believe has been doing this for 25 years. With that, I conclude my superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you, Kavya, and thank you, Dr. Maldonado, for your reports. Very informative, and certainly congratulations to all those who've received rewards and recognition today. Thank you for your work and your commitment to the district, to the students, and to nominate yourselves as peers, so I appreciate that. And so now we'll move to board comments and correspondence. We'll start with you, Ms. Alvarez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting. To respect the time, I will keep my comments very brief to give you the opportunity to make your comments. I, I was going to congratulate Dos Pueblos High School Counseling Team, and I had this whole written, written whole written information, which Dr. Maldonado covered and you covered. Congratulations. I am so honored to be part of your committee and to have signed that application. As a parent myself, my three students, my three kids went to DP, and they are the recipients of your wonderful counseling, your help, your guidance, so I am grateful to you as a parent and as a board member. I could not be more proud of our counseling team, so thank you and congratulations. Also, a big thank you to the San Marcos High School Jazz Band for a beautiful performance this weekend. I had the opportunity to attend to a fundraiser, and I can see the booster members, they're working, they're bringing the community together, again, to benefit our music program at the school, so thank you for that. And also, I will be attending on May 4th to the School for Sound Finance Symposium. This is an organization specifically for community-funded districts such as ourselves, and it will be in Sacramento. They do advocate for us at the, in the legislature for funding and better, better outcomes for us as a district. So I will be there on May 4th, and it's free to districts like us, so I invite any of my fellow board members that would like to go with me. I will be there overnight. So those are my comments, and again, thank you, welcome, and have a good evening.
Ms. Munoz. Thank you, Ms. Alvarez.
Okay, thank you, President Sims Moten. I'd like to thank the Facilities Team and appreciate them being recognized for all their, all their hard work. That's quite a, quite a feat that they accomplished. I'd also like to thank the Peak Staff and Santa Barbara City College for their emphasis on serving our students at a fairer like they did, for the inclusion and the diversity because of events like that, is that our students get guidance and support and get to get off on a good start at City College. I would also like to invite those of you that are here, I'm glad to see the good turnout, so I can spread the word about Earth Day, which is taking place on April 29th and 30th at Alameda Park this year. Our, our school district, as you know, has an emphasis on sustainability, on solar heating and solar energy. I'm also honored to be, have been invited by an author, Colleen McCarthy Evans, to help read a bilingual book in the kids' corner. So I'll be doing that on the afternoon of Saturday and Sunday at 2:30. We're going to have books to give away. She was able, they were able to get a grant to give 300 books away to the kids, so not only will they hear a story in English and Spanish, but they'll also have something to take home and read over and over again. So I'd like to also spread the word about that, and with that, concludes my board comment.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Munoz.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I too wanted to thank our Facilities Team and our school counselors. Thank you all for what you do. It means a lot to our school district, but for our students, most of all. Couple reports since our last board meeting. I too attended the Repairing the World screening, and it was fantastic and very encouraging the discussion and level of discussion that took place amongst our students, Kavya, you being one, and a great event overall. I also attended a meeting, it was a group meeting with students through AHA. I was invited to speak to them, and also a Future Leaders of America Parent Meeting, in which I attended. In addition, both Dr. Maldonado and I spoke at a League of Women's Voters Housing Forum, talking about housing policy and what it means for us here locally. As we know, it is a big challenge that we're all facing here on the Central Coast, but more specifically in Santa Barbara. Related to that, we did start a Housing Ad Hoc Committee to take a look at school district property and the possibility of, of housing, and we've met twice during those meetings to, to map out the vision for what the work group will be doing, or the ad hoc committee will be doing, but also taking a look at our properties, taking a look at what's possible, what sort of considerations are there, what support exists out there. And we did have Board Member Munoz on that ad hoc committee, but she will be stepping off, so I'd like to ask Dr. Maldonado if at next meeting, we can add an item to request another board member to join that ad hoc committee. And for the board, we will be coming to you, I believe, next week to talk about a survey. We want to get some input on, on this housing discussion as we're fact gathering right now, so that we can come back to the board. One of the really key pieces of information is, is going to come from that survey, as we're also gathering what sort of supports are out there, both financial, but also through process. We want to be able to come back to the board with a full picture, so that we can make the most informed decision on what direction, if any, that we want, want to go. And so with that, I am done with my board report, and just thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Escobar. Before you go, Mr. Banning, what did you want to say, Ms. Munoz?
Yes, I was just going to mention that because of my role on the Santa Barbara City Housing Authority Commission, is that I decided to step down from the, from the ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Mr. Banning?
I don't have specific attendance to report on. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, first of all, in supporting everything we've heard from the board members tonight about who we're recognizing, counselors, facilities, construction, student teams. I want to acknowledge that this is now my fourth month as a board member. I can't believe that it's that long already. But what I come to the table with every time, and every time in this room or communicating with any individuals or groups in this, in this organization, I just want to say how impressed I am with the, with the operations of this entire district. It's a great leadership team. I'm privileged to be part of, of the work up here on the board, but I want to tell you that every person, everybody in this room is part of why that is. It's not just the people sitting here. It's not just the people sitting there. It is this entire community that brings dedication, expertise, and enthusiasm to one of the most honorable professions that we can, we can ever have. So thank you all for being here, no matter where you're sitting in the room, no matter what's on your mind. And I want to make one particular call-out and say thank you to Kavya for, for keeping us abreast of the next, the next student board member. She's only the second one the district's ever had, and she's provided some really big shoes for whoever comes next. And so kudos to her and to all of you that take the time to be part of this incredibly important and complex, at times very difficult work, but we're all here for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. I just don't have a whole lot. I want to just echo the sentiments that has already been said, just to make sure that we're getting time to our public comment and for you. Again, thank you for your commitment here. You know, coming in and talking about issues and raising issues is a part of why we are the district. We continue to be the leaders that we are, to hear from you, the ones who are on the ground, doing the work. We get to hear it from our student representative, we get to hear from you as counselors and teachers and nurses, who are all coming here. So know that that, that is very key, and it's always about a care and concern for everyone, because it really results in the student outcomes that we're hoping for, and everybody plays a part in that. So thank you very much for being here and spending your time with us this evening. And also, I just want to say I'm pleased to be re-elected as a Delegate Assembly for this, this region. It's a very important position in the sense that the Delegate Assembly is the policymaking area of the California School Board Association, and I get to meet with 20 other regions of other school board members that are coming together. We're looking at EDCOs, looking at things that make it better, looking at policies. So when we hear from you, that is information that I take back to have those discussions, how we can make it better, looking at best practices across other districts, how we can be better, because really, every district is really trying to make the best for their students. They want the best for their students. Some do it in different ways, and how can we learn from each other and bring those best practices together? So I am pleased to represent this board on that, and certainly a part of this region. And again, I just want to echo all the work that is being done. I, I went to the repairing work screening. The important thing about those screenings and conversations is that we can't just leave it there. It has to come out in the community, it has to come in places where we are in different spaces. And so I appreciate having that and greatly appreciative of the invitation to go and see it, because so many times, we realize we may be, that we think we may be the only one that's going through something, but when we look out and have other conversations and invite other conversations in, we really know that we're kind of really doing the same thing and going through some of the same challenges. So I appreciate having seen that, so I just, just wanted to, to share that. So just want to conclude my comments, and also, I always just want to thank being a part of this board, being a part of this, this school community. Proud to be Santa Barbara USCBD, that's my thing. So next, we will move to item D9, the public comments, and Adriana's bringing up the slips. And we know we have a lot of folks that want to speak, and we want to make sure people have the opportunity to speak, so we are looking at 90 seconds, so that people have an opportunity to speak. And let me just say, I want to appreciate y'all respecting this. I just need to, I need to own it. I asked it, and now I just want to own that you are doing it, so I want to say appreciate and thank you for keeping the medium decorum, so we can keep it moving, so I appreciate that. So Ms. Alvarez?
I will be conducting public comment today. It'll be a minute and 30 seconds. When you have 20 seconds left, I will say 20 seconds, so you can wrap up your comments. Feel free to send us an email if you did not finish your comments. I can assure you that we read them. We cannot always answer every single one of them, but we do read them. And on a personal note, before I start a public comment, I want to say thank you to all of you, all of you teachers for being here. My aunt was a teacher. She's the reason I know how to read, and she's the reason I can read every single sign that you, that is here tonight. And let me tell you, I've been reading every sign. So thank you and welcome. And here we go with our first public comment. For D9 is Caroline Abati. And the next one, to please get ready, is Joyce Adrianson. The next one will be Becca Lowey. Please get in line. Please start.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Being a member of the school board is a huge responsibility. Hopefully, this public comment will provide helpful insight and perspective. Public education plays a critical role in how children and young people are raised and become adults. Tragically though, just recently, we saw yet another mass public murder shooting, this time in Nashville, Tennessee. Why does this keep happening? We need to start by asking questions. Why do we continue to see this completely disordered and barbaric behavior in our country? Are these incidents the consequences of a culture of death, which we have allowed to become part of our society, to the point now where these terrible tragedies just seem commonplace? 18 seconds. How did we get to this point? We know that each child is born innocent. No child is ever born to grow up and kill someone. We also know that the heart and mind of a child are very delicate and very easily traumatized.
Thank you.
Children and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Adrianson, please.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Maldonado. I'm Joyce Adrianson, president of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, as you know. Many of our members showed up here tonight to support our bargaining team's efforts on their behalf. These educators are the front line of our educational system. However, they often do not feel valued by the district. After listening, after the listening tour, you answered financial needs with a one-time stipend. Thank you. It helped, but that was just a Band-Aid. Our educators need financial stability. Our negotiating team asked the district to mutually agree to reopen salary negotiations, and you refused. I ask that you reconsider, as the 2% we are guaranteed next year is not in keeping with the projected average inflation rate of 6%. Adhering to our agreements is important, but our educators go above and above and beyond our agreement all the time, often arriving early and staying late, or working through their duty-free lunch to help students, or just to provide a safe space for students to go. They take on extra unpaid duties, they spend hours grading and planning and writing letters of recommendation, all on their own time. Why? Because they care. Please show them that you care about them. We agree that enhancing student outcomes is important, however, a revolving door of teachers, because they can't afford to live in Santa Barbara, not giving elementary teachers adequate prep time to plan, and high caseloads for sped teachers will not improve student outcomes. When you presented the budget study, Virginia Alvarez suggested looking at the budget together to find the money needed for these improvements. I ask that you seriously consider doing this. Thank you for listening. And remember, supporting educators equals supporting students.
Hi, everyone. I'm Becca Lowey, and I'm here to represent families that pay top dollar for subpar health insurance provided by our district. If we can't lower the premiums, we need to raise the salary cap. When I first started teaching at La Colina 22 years ago, we did not pay for health insurance. As premiums rose, there were years in which families with dependents paid the same as single-payers, but when I started raising a family, all of that changed. Now I'm the main salary earner in my household, I have three dependents, and without other options, I must rely on the health insurance provided by our district. The premiums cost $1,100 a month for the lowest tier with the highest deductibles. Beyond checkups, we try not to use this insurance. We've literally made decisions to avoid medical procedures because we just can't afford it. Next to our mortgage, our health insurance is our greatest cost. It seems to me a school district is only as good as its teachers, providing the vital needs of each student. But we have vital needs too. After 22 years devoted to this district, I feel devalued in the eyes of this administration. I have two young children who will be my dependents for the next 15 years, and as I get older, my need for quality medical insurance will increase, but so will all these premiums. This district's unwillingness to raise the salary ceiling, to be at least comparable to neighboring districts, puts my family at a disadvantage that I can't afford to ignore.
Thank you. I'm going...
I want to remind us, I want to remind, so we can keep moving. Can we still keep, continue to do this? We got to keep it moving, so go, Ms. Alvarez.
Okay. I'm going to call the next three speakers. Please come up. Kate Lambert, Douglas Carmen, if I misspelled, if I mispronounced your last name, I apologize, and John Pollak, please. Please start.
Thank you to my admin at my site for their support. Thank you to the teachers who came out here to speak and to stand up together. Let's work to retain teachers. Let's not just train them and send them on to better work environments, better pay, smaller classroom size, lower caseloads. Let's make our district a real contender for the most successful teachers out there. Let's tempt amazing teachers to come here. Let's give our community the best. I've been teaching for 14 years. I was disappointed to hear that the district would not be taking the opportunity to become equals with nearby communities that have increased salaries. I know we teachers can fight for it, but you as a district had the opportunity to alleviate that fight, support your community, and prove you are leaders in education. The message seems to be, to get things done, you must fight. You won't just win because it's right. You want to know about my financial issues? Of course not, who does? But as a teacher who pushes higher education, I feel like you should hear it. I tell students to go to college, some college, any college, but I cannot defend this stance with all my heart. I am educated but living paycheck to paycheck. I have 60 and a half years of higher education, but I cannot afford to be an independent person in this community. I have learned I must attach myself to someone else if I want to survive here. I am lucky, I have elderly parents, so I can pretend that I moved in with them at 40 because I want to help them.
20 seconds.
They don't need my help, I do. My education, my choice, my, to support rights and to get free education, is something that I cannot do in this community. You need to help us, you need to get us to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We want to also respect your colleagues as they're coming to speak, please.
Please begin.
The district's promises for the respectful treatment of all stakeholders rings false. High teacher turnover, especially in special education, is not a sign of respect and hurts our at-risk students. Piling adjunct duties upon elementary teachers and ignoring their needs for prep time is not a sign of respect. That sound you hear is your family's favorite teacher packing up and moving to a district that pays professional wages. I need my children's grandparents to raid their retirement funds to help us afford housing in Santa Barbara, and other teachers do not have generational wealth that enables them to work in a district that does not pay enough to live the American dream. I know many paraprofessionals and teachers who work with our most at-risk students who wait tables on the weekend, or have hour-plus commutes to compensate for below-market wages... commutes to compensate for below-market wages. All the while, the district hires lawyers to deflect lawsuits from underserved families. Good teachers save the district money. With an increase in property tax revenue and trimming the bloated top-heavy district management, we clearly have enough funds to reopen salary negotiations. I implore you, live up to your words and proclamations, reopen salary negotiations, send money back to the classroom. Your teachers are the sustainability plan you need to focus on.
Twenty seconds. Thank you. Next, next speaker, John Block. Joel Block. Dr. Block. Please start.
Good evening. My name is Joel Block, and I am a proud member of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I represent Alta Vista Independent Studies on the S B T A Rep Council. I represent S B T A as a delegate to the California Teachers Association, and I have represented California as a delegate to the National Education Association Representative Assembly. Tonight is the first time I come before you believing that the board and the district has made a decision that is shortsighted, harmful to the district and S B T A, and is inappropriate. The decision of the district to refuse to negotiate on those issues most important to the teachers' union belies the belief that we are in partnership together. While accepted in negotiations, each side wins some and loses some, the refusal to even talk about those issues paramount to S B T A is fundamentally different and shows that we are not really in partnership together. And it is my opinion that this refusal will have a long-term negative effects on our district. It will create an adversary mistrust and an adversarial relationship between the district, board, and S B T A.
Twenty seconds.
S B T A does not wish to be forced into action it does not want to take, but we will do what is necessary to protect our members and improve the quality of education for all students. I implore you to do the right thing. Negotiate on those issues that S B T A has identified.
Thank you, Dr. Block.
And keep a good relationship between the board, the district, and the teachers' union.
Thank you. Next three speakers, Amy Woods, Jeanette Peinado, and Deborah Reed. Please begin.
I'm here to address an important issue that affects the quality of education for our students, teacher salaries and benefits. I'd like to start by giving you some context. When I began my career in 2003, new teachers started at around $40,000 a year. Rent for a one-bedroom was about $1,000, and health insurance was completely covered by the district. For comparison, in 2023, teachers started around $58,000. Their minimum out-of-pocket expense for new teachers is $3,500, and the average cost of a one-bedroom is approximately $2,600 a month. If we factor in inflation, this means that new teachers are making less money and paying 160% more to live in this town. This is a serious problem. It's also a problem that our veteran teachers are feeling the effect of inflation more than ever. Each year, for the last three years, inflation has risen by at least 6%, yet our teacher and salary increase has been less than half that rate. What's more, teachers in neighboring school districts, Montecito, Cold Springs, Guelita, and Hope, are making an average of almost $25,000 more a year at the top of their pay scales. Across the state and throughout Ventura and Santa Barbara counties, districts are recognizing the crisis of inflation and increasing teacher salaries accordingly. Yet our district remains oblivious to the hardships facing our teachers and the potential impact on our community. The district cannot attract and retain teachers on this current trajectory. In the past five years, I watched a number of colleagues leave the district due to low salaries, subpar insurance, and lack of support. I urge the district to reconsider our contract and salary negotiations.
Thank you.
Investing in teacher salaries and our community is investing in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peinado? Please begin.
Jeanette Peinado, I'm vice president of the union and also a math teacher at Guelita Valley. And I'm really happy to hear counselors recognized tonight because I want to talk about mental health. That's dear to me, but I'm going to try not to cry. I love teaching. I've always told people I'm not in it for the money. I'm here because teaching students impacts our future. There's only a handful of teachers that have been in the district longer than I have, but this is my first time speaking. But mental health is what I want to focus on. I'm proud of Santa Barbara Unified's direction in supporting mental health and allowing students more support options. We've made progress. I'm excited that we will have a junior high health classes reestablished next year. There's key issues that we feel need to be highlighted. Students with mental health have grown substantially, as you are aware, partly from the pandemic, but partly because we are more qualified, I feel, to recognize patterns and discuss our emotions. California also leads in the number of school shootings. As a teacher, my focus is to support learning. We have this multi-tiered support system, and it requires a lot of documentation, daily contact, conversations, request for more support.
Twenty seconds.
It's actually overwhelming. I feel that I spend a lot of time, more than two hours a day, on that extra stuff. And I feel that I'm not a mental health worker, that I'm here to support students, and I want to have that time. I want you to try to attract teachers, retain them, so that people can handle this job. I want expectations.
Thank you.
And I want to be a good district.
Thank you. Ms. Reed? Please begin.
Hello. Deborah Reed, 22nd year in the district, serving special education students. According to federal data, as of October 2022, after the school year had already begun, 45% of U.S. public schools had at least one teacher vacancy. According to the same data, fully qualified special education teachers were one of the hardest groups to staff. Unfortunately, when new teachers enter our district and then depart Santa Barbara after only two or three years, they take all the wisdom and training they have received from our district workshops, from their colleagues, with them to other districts. And once again, we and our families and our students are left to start from scratch. If it was your child, as you mentioned, that you have children in this district who are struggling to reach grade level with their academic skills, who needed a feeding tube changed throughout the day, or who needed crisis intervention when they were in a bout of suicidal ideation, would you like to have somebody who had skills and experience and had been in the district and knew which agencies to communicate with in order to get those services put in place? Because when people leave us after two or three years, they're starting from scratch once again. And when somebody is in the midst of one of these crises, sometimes they don't have the time to wait for us to get past our learning curve. I implore you, as custodians of our community's educational system, to examine the impact that
Thank you.
this has on our students.
Thank you. I will now call the three next speakers. If you could please come up to the podium. Ryan Zibolski, Eric Nicholson, Rita Newhouse. Please begin.
Hello. Good evening, board members, fellow staff members, and parents. I'm here to express our concerns with your decision to not allow us to come back to the bargaining table and address the needs of your staff. I was born and raised in Ventura. When I was looking for jobs, I knew Ventura County, or Ventura Unified was the lowest-paying district in the county. I couldn't get back to the community I was raised in, and I still live in, I still live in today because of how badly their district showed they appreciated the hard work us teachers endured day in and day out. I looked for work elsewhere and landed here in beautiful Santa Barbara, 45 minutes away from home, and students I could be teaching. I chose to come to the place that values their teachers with unified appreciation for what we do. So I thought. Over the past eight months, I watched my mom, a 28-year veteran of V S D, stand up and fight for the raise they so badly deserved. From putting up picket signs in my yard, driving by and supporting the rallies at the government center, to attending V S D board meetings in support of not only my mom, but the many teachers I learned from that still support students day in and day out regardless of how little pay they received compared to neighboring districts. Now, on the other hand, I saw my wife, who works for Oxford Unified
Twenty seconds.
High School District, they didn't have to fight for anything. They got what they deserved because the district showed that they appreciated their teachers without the fight that we will bring if you do not show us what we deserve. So please help us, help our kids become what they deserve to be. You say
Thank you.
Whoops. Oh, I'm Eric Nicholson with no L in the last name.
Okay, with no L. Thank you.
First, I want to express my gratitude to Ms. Sims Moten and Mr. Banning for accepting my invitation on behalf of the Santa Barbara Blues Society to attend two assemblies we presented at the high school during Black History Month. Acoustic blues artist Guy Davis put on a masterclass for the music department and a highly engaging assembly for our upperclassmen. I'm also here tonight to share my experiences as a mild, moderate sped teacher at the high school for the last 18 years. In short, what I've experienced is that we scramble every year to fill vacancies in special ed, we get new teachers up and running, and within a few years, they're gone. At the high school level, staff turnover is especially difficult on the students we serve. I know of students who have had a different case manager every year of the four years they've been in high school. A vital part of effective case management is being able to advocate for our students, and without an established relationship with those on our caseload, it makes the task almost impossible. The demands of the dual jobs and responsibilities prove to be more than many of my former colleagues could endure.
Twenty seconds.
Some left the profession, but most have gone to other districts that understand those two roles. I offer, as an example of a district that figured it out, is Article 29 from San Diego City Schools. I'll send you the PDF if you'd like. In closing, I ask the board to take a hard look at the turnover rate throughout the district as it relates to special ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newhouse?
Okay. My letter's cut a little short, so. I spoke at a recent school board meeting asking for more support for special education teachers at my site and throughout the district. I thank Dr. Simmons for the support she has given us at Santa Barbara High regarding the room situation and continuing dialogue regarding places and spaces. I'm also very proud of the S B T A bargaining team because they have worked very hard to negotiate some new contract language into the contract specifically for sped teachers to address their overwhelming workload. I was disappointed to learn that the district is unwilling to work with S B T A on several key solutions that will make our district a more inviting place to work. I don't think anyone would argue that the best thing we can have for all students in S B Unified is consistently great and experienced teachers in every subject area, including special education. The question we need to answer is, how do we retain and recruit consistently great and experienced teachers here? Other districts have asked the question and found answers. San Diego Unified has a hard cap at 20 students per caseload. Other districts give additional prep time, signing bonuses, increased pay scales, other incentives.
Twenty seconds.
At some point, and maybe it's already happening, the consistently great and/or experienced teachers we have left will move on, and that quality, experience, and multi-decade knowledge will be lost. The biggest losers will be the students.
Thank you. The next three speakers, Andrew Giuliano, Nicole Goldman, and Hallie Silva.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Andrew Giuliano. I'm a member of the Santa Barbara community, local taxpayer, voter, son of two public school teachers. I'm not an educator, but I'm here to support the teachers as a member of the community. I'm concerned to hear about the unwillingness to open up teacher salary increases during contract negotiations. I'm saddened to see friends who have lived here their whole lives who now work for the school district having to move away because they can't afford to live here on the S B Unified salary. I'm concerned to see class sizes increasing, sometimes even surpassing state-mandated maximums. I'm frankly embarrassed that here in Santa Barbara, a place that prides itself on being exceptional, cutting-edge, we pay our teachers lower than any other district in the area. Why is that? Other public servants across the South Coast, from sanitary districts to planning commissions, parks and wrecks, police firefighters, have their salaries frequently adjusted to better cope with the exorbitant costs of living. Why are teachers being left behind? Ignoring this problem today is going to cause massive issues down the road. What's going to happen in 10 years when no teacher or other school employee can afford to live and work here? On today's consent agenda, you're about to approve a $32,000 for a new lawnmower, $54,000 for a high school front door, $27,000 to fill gopher holes, over $3.1 million for H1 payrolls in a single building. All important for sure, but why can't we even find the time to discuss paying teachers enough? The teachers are the people who keep Santa Barbara Unified exceptional. These are the people who were indispensable to the community during the pandemic at the expense of their own well-being. The people who are getting financially hammered by record inflation while their salaries lag. The people not being given the common courtesy and consideration to open their contract negotiations so they can afford to live here.
Nicole Goldman?
Good evening, members of the board and district leaders. For the past 11 years, I've worked in Santa Barbara Unified. But inflation, rising rent prices, and barriers to purchasing a home have all made living in the community in which I serve impossible. Lately, I've made it a daily habit of checking to see what homes are for sale in Ventura. Then I check Craigslist for job postings to hopefully find a third job, because even with the two jobs I currently work, my husband and I can barely afford to live here. Is this the life that you want your teachers living? Searching Craigslist for third jobs and stressing about whether or not they'll have to uproot their family and leave Santa Barbara? If teachers and school staff are pushed out of Santa Barbara due to meager wages, then this ultimately impacts the health of our school communities. Having a rotating door of staff means that schools will lose the institutional knowledge that's crucial for the success of our students. In December, you voted to give staff a small bonus because you knew that employees were feeling the burden of inflation. Board member Munoz, when asked about this bonus, you told News Hot, quote, "We know it's not the answer to all the issues. We hope it shows our support to our employees in going forward, trying to address other healthcare costs and workforce living costs." Well, today, teachers and school staff stand before you and demand to know, what are those ways in which you're trying to address these issues? Because we can tell you the most obvious way is to provide staff with fair and competitive compensation. Because if you don't, you will lose many of us to surrounding districts that are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Silva. After this speaker, we will close this comment on this area, on this agenda item, D nine. Please begin.
Good evening. I'd like to urge the board to approve and adopt the Strategic Arts Plan as soon as humanly possible. Our current plan has been expired for years now, and because of this neglect, we've been unable to have any items, projects, or infrastructure funded as part of the LCAP. Santa Barbara is a city that prides itself on arts engagement, but across our district, visual arts, music, and performing arts teachers write grants, hustle community orgs, pick up free stuff off the side of the street just to cover the basic needs of our programs. Our buildings are in dire need of renovation, but we only see academies and special programs getting new buildings or even basic repairs. For example, my classroom has been leaking rain since I started five years ago. Finally, this summer, it's going to get fixed. Our whole building gets fixed, but I wouldn't let this happen in my house, and I don't understand why it happens for our students. I clean up water every time it rains. Because our teachers do not have wholehearted support at the district level, we are at the mercy of individual sites to allot us funding and full-time classes. We know that all sites have different priorities, but we shouldn't have to be teaching multiple preps across diverse content areas to have full-time employment. It feels to me that we are consistently asked to do more with even less year after year. Even our VAPA coordinator is only a part-time admin and part-time teacher, but only being paid at the teacher's salary. With one-time state grants and propositions finally bringing funding to our arts departments, is my hope that we can make plans not only to fund in the short term, but actually plan to sustain visual and performing arts programs.
Thank you.
Let's invest in our programs, please.
Thank you very much. And this concludes public comment for items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you for your comments. And thank you for respecting the medium decorum. I know outside, you just had to let your voices go, so I appreciate the inside doing it. So thank you very much. See you. Okay. So we will move next to E one, Acceptance of Donations for the April 11, 2023. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve with appreciation.
And I second with appreciation.
Okay. Has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Right. Thank you. Motion passes. So we'll just take a little, just about a minute here to let the room clear out before we move to our next one.
And then we have consent agenda. We have F three, two speakers on F three.
Okay.
And then not till H one.
Okay. Oh, down to, okay.
So F three, two speakers.
Okay, so now we'll move to our consent, Ms. Munoz? We will move to our consent agenda. I do believe we have some requests to speak from the public.
Yes, we have two speakers on F three, approval or ratification of contract
Approval or ratification of contract agreements and memorandums of understanding under ten-thousand dollars each for April 11, 2023. And the first speaker is Jaclyn Chin. You have a minute and thirty seconds. When it's twenty seconds, I will call on you, and you could always send us an email if you do not finish your comment.
Perfect, thank you.
Please begin.
Hi, my name is Jackie, and I'm a third-year in the counseling psychology department, as well as a student clinician in the Healing Space.
Yes, could you hold on a minute? We can't hear you. We need to hear you on there.
Turn on, turn on the microphone. Press push.
Hello?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's start over. Please begin.
My name is Jackie, and I'm a third-year in the counseling psychology department, as well as a student clinician in the Healing Space Clinic. The Healing Space is what brought me to UCSB, and our clinic would not exist without the work of advocacy of Healing Justice Santa Barbara, our community board, and by name, Crystal Farmer Seegart, Letitia Resch, and Simone Nikela Ruskamp. The Healing Space is a clinic by and for Black students, for Black Santa Barbara community members. Ahead of us is Juneteenth, a period of celebration, but also a reminder of the deeply embedded racism that our Black students still experience in schools. We know that when Black people organize, there is a response of violence from folks who see our existence as a threat. It's not the job of our students to take on this violence, but the job of out, of us as clinicians, community members, and locally elected officials, to say loudly that our Black students are worth our time, energy, and commitment to protect. The Healing Space is a key part of this in the Santa Barbara community. My call to action is this: As funding decisions are being made about resources for the school board to invest in, the Healing Space Clinic and Healing Justice Santa Barbara must be at the top of the list. Otherwise, we are only further engaging in anti-Blackness by assuming that others are the experts of our own experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one, is it virtual or is it in person? Ms. Morales? Virtual? Okay, we ready? Is she ready? Ms. Crystal Farmer Seegart? She's not. Okay.
Well, should we come back?
Yeah, we can come back if she happens to come on.
Okay, thank you.
So, those the comments for that?
And that concludes public comment for consent agenda.
Okay, board members, on the consent agenda, are there any ideas you'd like to pull for discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Escobedo? Ms. Munoz? You gonna second? Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Dr. Maldonado, that's not you. That's not you. Very good. Next, we'll move to our action agenda. Approval of the Human Resources Recommendation. Dr. Becky, I believe that's you.
Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board Members, Superintendent Maldonado. Happy to be here to present the, this board meeting's Human Resources Recommendations. These are, again, to remind the board and the public that these are the transactions from Human Resources that have happened since our last board meeting. I do want to just take a second to call your attention to, on page two, there is one retirement, and most people in the district know Robert Ibarra, but he is retiring after thirty-plus years, and he's one of our warehouse workers and does a lot of deliveries, so he gets around to a lot of sites and knows a lot of people in the community. So, wanted to congratulate him. I also wanted to point out that there are five classified promotions. Enrique Perez was here tonight, so he is on this actual board list for approval, but you can see those promotions, and we want to congratulate those people that are receiving promotions in the classified space. The other, on page, I believe it's page three, I just wanted to point out, there are nine, again, nine additions to language premium stipends, and I keep calling those out, but I'm really happy to see those. And we also have three bachelor's degrees. Anna Clark, Diego Martinez, and Elizabeth Salazar are all receiving premium pay for their bachelor's degree, so congratulations to them. I just noticed, actually, Elizabeth Salazar, we will bring that name back and change the amount, because it says one oh four per month, and I think that needs to be three eighteen point two six, so I'll probably have that on the next board list as well, as a correction. And then we do want you to see that there are also more subs added this time around as well. And with that, I want to open it up to any questions you might have.
Don't have any public requests to speak on this item, so? Board members, any questions or comments?
No public comment.
Any comments or questions, board members? May I have a motion to approve this item?
I move to approve the personnel action items as presented.
I second the motion.
Motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Becky, oh. We'll now move to G2, Approval of Contract with Robert Half International, Inc.
Thank you very much. Board members, before you is a contract, and I think the best way to describe this Robert Half contract is that, if you think about substitutes for teachers, this is really the, the way in which we have substitutes for clerical staff. We also have contracts with other agencies like Spheryon that provide substitutes for custodial work, but Robert Half is, is focused solely on clerical work. In July, the board did approve a PO for seventy-five thousand. This item is coming back to you. We are just seeking to get through this school year a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, so seventy-five has, has already been allocated, but we do need to get through the school year, and so that's what this request is. We've also brought the contract forward and really honed in the contract as part of the new contract process that we have, so that's why there is a detailed attached contract here that my department, the fiscal department, and superintendent's office have worked on, so you'll see that attached as well. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any requests to speak on this item, Ms. Alvarez?
No public comment.
Okay. Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, I do have several questions. Most of them have already been answered via email. I would like to elaborate a little bit more for the benefit of the public. Is this item already in the budget, number one? Number two, is this a reoccurring expenditure, meaning every year are we expecting to bring, are you expecting to bring a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar contract to us?
Okay, good questions. I, as far as in the budget, I, I believe this will be an addition of eighty thousand in the budget, because in the budget already was the seventy-five that was approved for the PO in July. I'm kind of looking to Kim to make sure I get a head nod on that information. And the, the second question is, this will fluctuate, but I, I expect it to be lower than that, actually, in the coming years, but with the crisis that we've had in terms of the labor market, it's been much higher cost to us in the last couple of years, so I expect it to go down.
Okay.
I have just a little addition to that. So, for these, these temp positions, in our budget, most of it is already covered in our budget. About a hundred and twenty of the hundred and fifty-five K is already covered in our budget because we are filling vacancies. So, we have the savings from the, the unfortunate holes that we have of not being able to hire, we lose people. So, when that happens, and we have a, a temp fill those holes, there's already, most of that is already covered in our budget. The other piece of it is, sometimes we have people that are out on leaves for, like, medical leaves, or, you know, workman's comp, or sick leaves, and if we have to fill those positions, then that part is, is an actual addition to our budget. So, we're estimating only about thirty, about thirty K, thirty-five K of that is an addition because we're already paying the employee that's out on leave, and then we also have to fill that hole with, with the temp.
I want to make sure that this is clarified, that this is not additional positions, this is not salary increases.
Correct.
This is, what you're doing is basically you're reallocating a budget item that was already in the budget for specific positions that are vacant. So, you're achieving a cost savings, and you're moving those funds to get a temp. Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
And the impact, additional impact, might be thirty-five thousand dollars because the people on leave might remain on paid status.
Correct. Yeah, and that is just an estimate for the rest of the year, so.
Thank you. And if I hear you correctly, this is, this contract will probably be recurring in future years?
Yes, and we went back and we looked, and we have had contract, this contract going back five or six years, we've had these kinds of temp agency contracts, and they haven't been contracts, but they've had, we've had purchase orders for those going back. The highest so far was a period during, was it last year or the year before, when, when COVID, when we really had lots and lots of holes, that's been the highest amount, and that was much higher than, than what we're seeing this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add, Kim, thank you answering my question. I just think that's important, so in terms of how we're funding these positions and the history that we have done that traditionally, to understand that it's not something new, but we're able to do it through salary savings or cost savings, as Ms. Alvarez said, just to be clear on that piece, is because you're budgeting salaries, but for whatever may happen, we need to fill it temporarily. That's through, we're using those dollars that have already been budgeted. Correct, okay. Dr. Becky? Okay, hearing no additional comments or questions? Here, motion to approve this item? I know it's spring break, y'all, but come on.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Escobedo?
I second.
Okay, Ms. Munoz? Motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item approved. Okay. All right, next we'll move to G3, Petition for Readmission of Expelled Student, case number two zero two one two two dash three two.
I move to approve readmission of student, case number two zero two one two two dash thirty-two, and I'm very happy to make this motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. G4, Ms. Alvarez, I do believe you have this one as too, making the motion?
Yes, I move to approve student discipling, case number twenty twenty-two twenty-three dash seventeen.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, we have now come to the time where we have a report discussion. Normally, we take about ten minutes. In between this, board members, are you, want to keep on going? You need a five-minute break? Five minutes, somebody needs five minutes, okay. Put it on the timer, five minutes. Thank you, we'll be back in five minutes. Okay. We'll start our H1. Are there any requests to speak?
We have one, two, three, four, five requests for speaker on H1.
Okay. Do you want to start with Ms., Ms. Farmer, because I know there was a disconnect on her first call, so we're going to allow her to speak on the item she wanted to speak on, as well as the one, so we would give her three minutes. Typically, we don't, but her call got dropped.
Is she online?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's start. Ms. Farmer, are you online? Crystal Farmer Seegart? Can you hear us? Ms. Seegart? Well, maybe we'll come back.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Yes, we can hear you. Please start.
Okay, this is for the previous agenda item?
Yes, go ahead and start for F3, Items Not on the Agenda. Oh, I'm so sorry, no, for contracts under ten thousand dollar, F3. So, you have a minute and a half for that, and then we will continue for, did you have another one? For another one here, for H1? So, go ahead, Ms. Farmer, start with F3, Contracts Under Ten Thousand Dollars.
Oh, okay. Well, y'all approved it, so.
We still want to hear from you, so please go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm Crystal Farmer Seegart. My pronouns are she/her. As many of you know, I'm one of the co-founders of Healing Justice, along with Simone Ruskamp, and I'm just happy to see that there's a MOU moving forward with the Healing Space. I think, especially in these times, it's important to continue to support especially our Black African-American students by providing them mental health services, and have clinicians that are representative of the community. And so, I'm just really proud, I just want to say how proud I am of the Healing Space clinicians, and all, and how they have worked alongside Healing Justice to continue to provide this service to the school districts, and I really hope the school districts continue to partner with Healing Space, and to continue to really utilize these clinicians that all have amazing experience. One of them is my daughter's clinician, and I'm very thankful for this space.
Twenty seconds.
And I just wanted to come on today and be supportive of them and all the hard work that they are doing to help combat anti-Black racism within these schools.
Thank you. We will reset the timer, and we will move on to your next comment in regards to H1. So, if you reset the clock. Okay, we're ready, please start.
Oh, I'm up again?
Yes. Two for one.
I'm like, Simone, could it go before me? I, to be honest, can you, can you put me next? Because I need to remember what this agenda item is.
We will do that. Please stay, so the next one, I will have a couple people who are here, present, so you can hold on, and then you can come back. Will that be okay?
I think she's expecting that.
Okay. Dr. Moore? Jordan Kilber? Isaiah J. Jones? And then Simone Ruskamp? Please, Dr. Moore, please?
Good evening, Board, and so, turn on the, there's a button, push.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, you got it. Okay. Good evening, Board, and our fellow leadership and administration. So, my name is Dr. Charlotte Galette-Moore, and by profession, I'm a boy-certified adult nurse practitioner, and I don't know if you are aware, but April is considered the National Minority Health Awareness Month, and the need for the Minority Health Awareness Month is to raise the importance of health and racial concerns in, in regards to health disparities and those impacting the health and minority populations, and also wanting to reduce health disparities. And one of the most modifiable social determinants of health is through education. And this year's theme is called Better Health Through Better Understanding. But after listening to some of the comments and the award given to the DP counselors, I'm really concerned, are our Black students really getting the understanding that they rightfully deserve? There's a plethora of data going back at least two decades that California is failing their Black youth, and they provided a presentation.
Twenty seconds.
And I didn't see any kind of reflection on how it's benefiting our Black youth. And as you know, children who experience anti-Blackness, racism, any form of discrimination, can lead to signs of post-traumatic stress disorder. And with these types of experiences.
Thank you. Please send us, please send, please send us an email with your full comment.
I will do so, thank you.
Thank you. Please begin.
All right, thank you. Hello, Board. My name is Jordan Kilberu. I am a co-founder of Juneteenth Santa Barbara, along with Simone Ruskamp, who is about to speak, but I'm also a fervent supporter of Healing Justice Santa Barbara, and I want to call, I came today to just talk about what I read, and of course, your equity study, racial equity study about normalized racism. And I'm so glad that you went ahead and voted for the MOU for the Healing Space. That was something that was really near and dear to my heart, working with Healing Justice, to help get started, because what we know is that there wasn't enough Black mental health practitioners for our youth, for our community. And so, I'm so grateful for that to be passed. I hope that we can continue to pass it and support it, because it's needed now. And so, please make sure that this MOU is made aware to all of the school sites, so that these Black mental health practitioners can get on those school sites. that these Black mental health practitioners can get on those school sites and help our babies. I just want to say, we need to end this normalized racism, and this is one solution to get this there. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, do we, who do we have online? Okay, Ms. Farmer, are you ready for your comment? Ms. Farmer Segard?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, please start.
Hi, me again. I just wanted to comment a little bit about the, because I know this is the agenda about the racial incidents, and I, you all can, for about a year, the district was conducting a survey regarding, or equity assessment regarding some of the stuff that happened back in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. And of course, the data came back and showed much of what the public was stating. I just really want to encourage the district to reach out and partner with some Black organizations to really address the urgency of the anti-Black racism that's been happening within these schools, as we continue to see MOU after MOU. It's not specific to Black African-American children, and that seems very hurtful, especially since there's parents that continue to come to the Combating Anti-Black Work Group and continue to uplift the urgency needed in responding to some of these incidents. As a Black parent, as myself, I'm, I'm worried that we're just throwing things under the rug and blaming it on the fact that there are not enough Black students in the district, but even two or three is enough. And I really, really want the Board to respond to this in urgency and start partnering with some Black organizations to come and do this work.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have anyone else online? Simone? Ms. Ruskamp, are you online? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Please begin.
Greetings, you all. This is Simone, I'm one of the founders of Juneteenth, as well as Healing Justice Santa Barbara. I wanted to call to actually make sure that the MOU with Healing Space is honored. You can imagine my disappointment as a Black parent, as someone who cares about Black children, hearing about the over twelve incidents, right, that started this work, the advocacy from Black parents, and then seeing how slow you all have been to actually use community resources that have been developed by Black people. You now have Black student clinicians who are willing and able to work and support Black students who have been harmed at the schools, but we have been hearing that they haven't been supported and that the MOU that previously was in place between Healing Space and the school district is not being honored by individual schools. This is unfair. It also creates further harm to Black students, and it's a reminder that Black students are not a priority for this district, which is frankly unacceptable. There's long-term negative outcomes when you ignore the urgent need of Black students. So I would ask you to, one, do what you agreed to do over a year ago, and to stop misleading the public. You often are talking about how you are collaborating with organizations, but we have seen that to not be true. So follow up with the Healing Space. Use these Black clinicians who are well-qualified to actually serve your Black students and include us in the data. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Isaiah J. Jones, is he online? Oh, you're here. It said virtual here.
Thank you.
Check.
Please begin.
My name is Isaiah J. Jones. As a Black Mexican man who has grown up in America, as well as a Healing Space clinician here in Santa Barbara, I understand the impact of offhand comments, aggressions, and physical violence against people, and especially on Black youths. And while I am absolutely happy for an MOU, I know that is not the end of the work, and it is not enough to simply apologize over and over to also allow for continued harm. And so to be an ally against racism and to combat anti-Blackness happening right now in schools, I am asking for more than just promises or visiting older discussions, or even the MOUs. And while I recognize that those are definitely the first steps to the discussion, those first steps have also long since passed. And so, and sharing this with you is my hope to reestablish those promises and that movement on those action items. And that is not limited to just temporary suspensions of students, or for faculty or staff, or talks behind closed doors, or personal referrals outside of services. As a member of Healing Space, I can say that we are here as a resource, absolutely.
Twenty seconds.
Before and after. As a Black man, I'm asking to join my community and demanding more from you, our allies. And so, because we are here, because we deserve to be, because we deserve to feel that way, please commit yourself to funding Black safety, whether that be.
Thank you.
Faculty, staff, or more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude our public comment? Thank you. All right, now we hear the report on, in discussion of updated racial incidents. Ms. Edison?
Good evening, Board, Superintendent and Community. Again, we're back doing our racial incidents report. This is a staple of how we progress monitor data and experiences of our students. And tonight, I will be presenting a partnership with some of our community partners from Healing Space, so I'm excited to hear more about that. Next slide. You were good on that side? All right, so we have had six racial incidents across five of our schools. We'll continue to break down the data of what those five racial incidents were. Next slide. Tracking and progress monitoring, we'll continue to do that throughout the year. This is not to minimize experiences, it's really so that we keep it at the forefront. And this is a data report, this is not reporting the responses to all of these situations. Next slide. As you can see, and as the community continues to let us know this is happening at all grade levels, there is not a concentration at secondary, this is at all grade levels, a great opportunity for preventative work has come out of the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group, really wanting to get down to preschool and TK. Next slide. Of those six situations or incidents, four of them were directed towards another student. Others were indirect. Remember, if it's directed towards a student, we've identified the person harmed. Indirect, walking through the hall, making comments where people may be harmed, but it isn't targeted, right? There isn't a person that it was towards. Next slide. Here's that breakdown between verbal, verbal meaning it was said directly to someone, verbal casual between friends. As we can see, we have four incidents that were targeted towards someone, not amongst a social peer group, and then two written incidents. Next slide. We continue to highlight how we're linking multiple initiatives. I do want to highlight, this is not all the work. We're literally doing preventative and intervention at the same time, short term and long term at the same time, responding to harm and trying to prevent harm all at the same time. This is a comprehensive systematic approach. And sometimes our responses are immediate and timely, because we are responding to the experience of students with supports. And sometimes we're taking that information back and planning for prevention, all right? So that work is all going at the same time. We are focused on relationships. We'll have the safety plans coming to you all in the next meeting, and you'll see that folk, the actions from each of our school sites on how we're focused on relationships. We went and asked our principals, specific for our African-American and Black population, do you know each of your Black and African, or African-American students by name, face, and story? We challenged them to go back and not only know them by name, face, and story, but know if they themselves had experienced a racial incident on their campus. So they reported that information and data up to us. We pushed back a little further and said, do you know who their trusted adult is? Every student on your campus who identifies as Black or African-American, do you know who their trusted adult is? And if they don't have one, what's the work to get them one? And so that work has been done. We also, at our secondaries, are reporting about, we have a BSU at Santa Barbara High School, and ones forming at the other schools. And so we will be looking out for that partnership and community to help us build and sustain those at our campuses, but that work is underway at the schools at this moment. This is not all the work, I just highlight some of the work as part of our report, because I do think we need to continue to have the conversation about how do we meet the whole needs of our students? And specifically, when we start talking about targeted populations, how do we partner with community? So I am excited that we'll have some of that information coming forth to you now, and I will yield to Steve, who's gonna do the introduction.
Thank you, Kenya. So I am just coming to you just to give you a little bit of information about the MOU itself, how important it is, because it actually is designed to support both students, meaning specifically the practicum students who are going through the program at UCSB, as well as giving this necessary and supportive program to our students, particularly here in the school district. The great news is that the MOU goes all the way up to 2027. So we don't have to spend any more time, we just, let's just get, get on it right now, and we're ready to go. I just wanted to say a thank you to Professor Jill Sharkey, the Associate Dean at the school, that helped us hammer it out. Thank you, Jill. And it's my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Alison Cereso, I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Oh, yeah. Cereso, thank you. Associate Professor in the Department of Counseling Clinical and School Psychology at UCSB, Gavert's Graduate School, and of course, the Healing Space. We also have practicum students Gabby Hinjoso? Okay, you're like, is that it? Okay, Inhosa, thank you. And Angela Pollard, who will also be talking as well about the program this evening, so please, welcome.
All right, hello, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to introduce our clinic. As shared, my name's Alison Cereso, and I'm an Associate Professor in the Counseling Clinical School Psychology Department at UC Santa Barbara. As part of the faculty position, I'm the Director of Healing Space, a community-serving clinic based at UCSB. I'm also a health equity researcher and program evaluator. My work is currently funded by the National Institute of Health and California Department of Public Health. So about a year ago in spring 2022, we met with Hilda Maldonado and her team to discuss how Healing Space could help the Santa Barbara Unified School District deal with racial trauma that was happening to Black youth on a regular basis. Since then, we have placed two interns in two of your schools, they'll both speak in a little bit. And my goal here today is really to express how us, the healing team, want to develop a long-term collaborative relationship with the district. Can you move forward to the next slide? So research shows that racism is devastating to youth's learning and academic potential, and that racism also takes a serious toll on the self-esteem and mental health of youth. In our clinic, we have the unfortunate pattern of working with Black and youth and families after they've been referred following a racist incident, oftentimes racial violence. So as a professor and clinical supervisor, I do have an ask. I would love for our clinicians to be able to work with Black families also on positive experiences. And so not only dealing with the aftermath of racial trauma, but also helping with system-wide efforts that prevent racism in the schools in the first place. Next slide. The mission of Healing Space is to support community-led efforts that center wellness for the Black community, with the focus on combating anti-Black racism, colorism, and other experiences of social oppression. Our clinicians are Black psychologists in training, they are trained as scientist practitioners, which means that in their five to seven years of doctoral studies, they gained expertise as both researchers and clinicians. Our training model at Healing Space and the services we provide are rooted in an Afro-centered and racial trauma approach. Our clinic opened at the very beginning of 2021, following the call to action after the very public murders of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. Around the same time, a community pillar moved out of state, which left a major gap in the availability of culturally responsive therapy services. We were approached by Healing Space Santa Barbara with funding from the Tope's Foundation to get a new clinic off the ground. We are indebted to our community partners who have helped to shape the development of a Black-serving community clinic that is rooted in the needs of the community. Next slide. We are a team of eight and growing. We are community-responsive clinicians and researchers, we have many skills, and are eager to partner in the service of supporting Black youth and families, including system-wide efforts that prevent the need for racial trauma services in the first place. We look forward to developing a long-term collaborative relationship with the district so that all youth can thrive in school. Okay, so next, we're gonna have Gabby and Angela speak to their experiences. Gabby's gonna speak to the experience of being allowed to do really great work as a Healing Space clinicians in the school, and Angela will speak a little bit about some of the missed opportunities that she's faced.
Hi, everyone, I'm Angela Pollard, so I'm a second-year school psychology trainee at the Gavert School. And so I entered the field to really help create safe and joyful school environments for kids, and I just really love working in schools, it's probably my favorite system to work with, because I can be a constant presence for kids as they grow academically and socially, and support them as they figure out kind of who they are and how to change our world for the better. In addition to developing expertise with special education services, my training as a Healing Space clinician really helps me facilitate wellness for the Black community, generally and after experiences of anti-Blackness and racial violence. Given my training and personal experiences, it is especially painful and frustrating when there are missed opportunities for intervention, which is what's been happening at Santa Barbara Junior High. This pain and frustration is definitely shared by many in the larger Santa Barbara community, and these experiences are really known to contribute to higher rates of burnout for Black and Brown school staff. And so moving forward, I'm just really excited about a meaningful partnership so that we can do that system-wide work and fund both kind of our clinicians coming in, but also potentially some permanent staff who can really be a permanent support in the schools.
Hello, everyone, my name is Gabby Anna Hosa. I'm also a second-year practicum student at UCSB, and I'm also a student clinician in the Healing Space. I have been fortunate to have positive experiences at San Marcos High School. I've been working under the supervision of Kim Osborne, and she has been great supporting me with the BSU at San Marcos. And in this space, I have created a safe space for the small community, the small amount of Black students we have at San Marcos, to heal, to spread laughter and joy, and it's been beautiful seeing how much they grow in these spaces and how beneficial it is towards their education. I hope that the SBUSD can make supporting Black students a priority in today's racial climate by actively incorporating and seeking out the Healing Space for Black families to use for mental health services and racial healing. Thank you.
We are excited for partnership. If we can move to the last slide in that presentation, I thank our partners from Healing Spaces, and I'm excited about the work that we'll continue to do with them, not only building systems, but sustaining them beyond all of us, so that our students and community benefit from them. One of the things we have done, Board, as we continue to implement MTSS practices and developing sustainable systems for our students, not only serving all students, but also the targeted needs of specific populations of students, is partner in a different kind of way. What you see on the screen is an opportunity where we called all of our community partners, we invited them in to the work, we shared with them what our goals were as a district, where our identified needs were, particularly with our targeted populations, where we could use more support, and where the ideas are already resting within the community, and said, how can we partner differently, moving in for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year? So as you can see, it was a full house in this very space here. Folks signed up for work that they probably were already doing on a smaller scale, but we identified a higher need, and they rose to the occasion and said, we can step in and scale up. So we are looking to be very intentional about how we fund our partners and ensuring that we have better off metrics for our students, not just all student metrics, but particularly for targeted populations. And so it was exciting to be in the space with them, the energy was full, we probably anticipated about twenty-five folks coming, because it was the really rainy day, and every seat in this room was filled. And so we are excited now, we're reaching out to partners and calling them in to prepare our contracts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and sharing with them. our contracts for the 2324 school year, and sharing with them the data that we're going to be asking back, because it isn't enough to partner, we have to partner so that the student experience is different. And so we're excited for this work, and we're using MTSS to guide those decisions. So I am extremely thankful for our partners. As a transplant to the Santa Barbara community, I have overwhelmingly been supported, and folks have reached out and said, we do this, we do this, do you know about this? And so I'm excited to be able to learn more and bring that to our families. With that, that's the end of our presentation, and I'll open it for questions.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Board members, comments? Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you. A great presentation, and thank all of you for being here. It's always very beneficial to me to hear what you're doing at the sites, your experiences. So thank you, I appreciate that. And I do have a couple of questions. If you already covered this, I apologize, I was processing what you were saying. I don't know, well, okay, I'll start with your, because I do have a question.
Okay. (laughing).
Okay, that's okay, that's okay. So this is supposed to serve all students, which I'm really happy to hear that. You say our goal is serving all students. It was mentioned that its work is being done at San Marcos High School right now. Is there this work being done at any of the other schools?
So I don't know where other interns are placed.
We only have the two.
Just the two. So it sounds like we just have the two now.
So one's at San Marcos and the other one?
Santa Barbara Junior.
Santa Barbara Junior High. Yeah, those are the two I wrote down. Are there any plans to expand to the other schools?
The sky's the limit, and we just solidified this MOU, so give us an opportunity to put it in place. We will use every service that we have available for kids.
So I will be asking you next week.
But I will.
It's a week and a half.
I will make the comment, though, that as a supervisor, like, my goal is that we have clinicians out where there are Black staff, because we don't want students to be out there in isolation. And so I think there has to be also that work done at the school district level, too, to try to bring in more Black staff. That would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you. And is there follow-up? How are we going to know the student experience that they like? I know they like the program. How are we going to know that they like the program, what they will like to see different? What are their, that their needs are being met? What's the evaluation process?
Board member, I just want to remind you, as an MTSS district, we use data to guide decisions, and that data could be any number of sources. So again, this MOU just came through. I have not had the privilege to be in space with our community partners yet, but we will sit down and have a conversation about their needs and our needs, and our needs is the data and experience piece, so that we can make sure we're reporting out. And when things are working, we can scale up.
Wonderful. Thank you. I look forward to hearing the progress of this partnership. So thank you.
Ms. Munoz, may I speak?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the efforts out in our schools. It's so important for our students to see faces that reflect their reality and such. And so thank you so much, Angela and Gabby, and for, sorry, Dr., trying to get this over here, Sardesso? Sardesso? And thank you, you know, of course, for your efforts in leading this. I look forward to our students being able to have support on campus, to be able to go someplace where they can get counseling and support in positive, you know, situations also. So thanks.
Ms. Escobedo?
Thank you. Thank you for the report today. Thank you for the folks from Healing Spaces coming in and telling us about this amazing partnership. I'm really excited about it. Couple of questions. The racial climate assessment, the anti-Blackness racial climate assessment, is that still planned to come to the board next week, or what is the schedule for that?
Because we co-lead in this district, I'm going to invite my partner up in co-leadership, Steve Vence, to come out to that question, because that is one of his initiatives that he's been leading.
So for the report, the inside report, we're planning on having that go to the board next week. So we are, actually, I was meeting with them on Monday, and we've been meeting last week, just doing the finalize editing to the report. So yes.
Thank you. And so when it does come to the board, will there be actionable items contained in that presentation and in that report? One that was mentioned today that I've brought up previously is, yes, hiring, retaining, providing an environment that is welcoming and supportive for Black teachers and staff. And that was one comment that was made, is, yes, we want interns at all of our schools, but they need the support. Will there be actionable items like that that contribute to the environment? And I know we don't have the report, but I want to make sure that they're actionable things, not just a report.
So part of the RFP included not just the assessment, excuse me, it would also, we asked of them to do the analysis and to provide recommendations.
Okay.
So I can answer with, I know for certainty, because I've looked at the draft of it, and there are recommendations in there. And one of the things in particular is that one of the, one of the categories we asked of them, we went back to them and said, we would actually like more recommendations. So that's what they've been doing over the past week or so, just providing more, doing more research and providing more recommendations.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And this question might be for Ms. Edison. Is there an update on the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group? And are they still meeting?
They are still meeting. We were scheduled to have them come and present their recommendations to the board, and there was amongst the group consensus that they wanted to go back and have a bigger discussion about possibly other recommendations, that they feel that we missed something somewhere. So again, this is their work, we're just facilitating it, and we want to be very responsive to their requests. And so the hope is that it will be coming soon, but we want to make sure it's meaningful work, and it's work that they are standing behind, and so as soon as we have that, we'll bring it. But yes, we are still meeting.
Fantastic. And I just wanted to highlight that as another area or opportunity for us to get feedback and recommendations.
Yes.
So I appreciate that. I'll just keep my comments brief. I'm excited about the Healing Spaces partnership. I think a very enlightening comment is, we absolutely also need a partner in the good moments, too. And I think that is a big opportunity for us, and I am fully supportive. I want to see this expanded into every school. I know we're early on, so we'll give you some time, but there's definitely some infrastructure and some foundational changes that we have to make to make that happen, and I'm looking forward to getting that work. As you always remind us, this is the right work to be doing, and so I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Kavya?
I just want to say thank you again for the presentation. As always, it's very informative, and I think it's really important to continually look at that data to make sure that we're doing the right kind of work that addresses the issues in an appropriate manner. And then I wanted to say welcome and thank you so much to the team here. I'm so, so excited that y'all are going to be joining us. I think it's really important to have targeted mental health support. I know how pervasive racial trauma can be, and especially for our Black students, our Black community members, where it's been a generational systemic issue, that collective joy and collective experience of happiness is something that has been stripped away for centuries. So I'm really, really, really grateful that we have folks like y'all that are helping instill, you know, these self-care rituals, these mental health improvement strategies to make sure that we're breaking that generational cycle and ensuring that we're able to create a collective group in which, you know, joy and happiness and laughter is experienced, and that self-care is normal and a daily ritual. So thank you all so much, and I'm really excited to see the progress that we make in this. And one specific question that I had was, are these services that are like being offered through the Healing Space, are they like alongside with specific mental health, like FSA services that would be offered to a student that comes in and, like, to their counselor and gets a referral? What kind of like services would be offered to that student seeking like treatment for racial trauma?
Through Healing Spaces or in general? Okay, so specifically? Okay, I'll start with that.
So when we get a youth or family that seeks services, we typically try to put them into personal, or what is also called like individual counseling, but there is absolutely opportunity for group counseling and for healing circles, too. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Mr. Beney?
Just want to add my voice of appreciation for the hard work that's going on and for the partnership that, for the Healing Spaces. This is important and critical work. Thank you for being part of it. Look forward to our next steps and knowing what's coming up.
Thank you. Thank you again for this presentation, and thank you so much for being here. And I just echo the comments that have already been stated, and I, there were some words that I, you know, was there, but excited, from the clinicians here. I'm excited to be here and to be a part of making a safe and joyful space, and you don't often hear that. And I think it's really important to make sure that our Black students know we're targeting them. It is just so easy sometimes to say, it's everybody, but everybody's not facing the issues that they're facing. So this is, and I don't hate to use the word targeted, but we're focusing, whether it's a better word, we're focusing on them, those needs that have not been traditionally intentionally worked on. So I'm really clear about that. I know we have mental health services and opportunities, but this has to be focused, so that we're not telling them, I was saying, someone was saying the other, what other stories are we telling ourselves? What are the stories that we're telling our students? And what is the action in front of us that we can do to change the story? Part of that is the work that we're doing. We're looking at the climate survey, how are we looking at using data to guide our decisions, and partnering with the community to come in and realize that we need your help. We are part of this community, and we want to make sure you're uplifted and not, again, shifted in, you know, like flower, we're just going to shift you as part of the whole thing. But it really is, it's going to have that focus and want you to know there's intentionality about making sure you feel safe, and that you do feel joyful, and that you do want to come to school. That is the story that we have to tell our students. They have to believe it. And you know, in African-American culture, Black culture, storytelling is crucial. And so we have to tell them a different story. And we do that with the actions in front of us, the things that we're saying here, putting our focus and our minds through all of that piece, so that the story that they tell their children is going to be different than the story that they lived, because we made the, we made it very intentional about what needs to happen here. So I appreciate, again, I'm looking forward to the partnership, and I know you got to go back and look at, because we're like, yes, we're here, and we want to move that. But we got to realize, this is something that's been happening for years, and we, it's going to take us a while to do that, but I just really appreciate the intentionality that is here tonight, the ongoing that we're going to need to do, and again, what is the story that we're telling ourselves, and what's the action in front of us to make sure that we tell a different story?
Absolutely. Thank you. And I just want to remind, in our partnering with community, we remind that we have students 180 days, and they belong to Community 365. So we have to partner, because life doesn't stop on the weekend or when we're on break. So this is why it's so important for us to know that we create a wraparound for families, so that when we're closed, life still happens, they still feel supported. So that's why the partnership is so important.
Dr. Maldonado?
Thank you. First of all, I agree that we need to mark this moment, and I am going to ask if we can take a picture with the team, because there is, even though we are a year out, it feels like it's a small movement in the bureaucracy of a school district to get us to where we are today. The work didn't end, and as Kenya has said, it has been parallel work, it has gone in different directions. It hasn't been the straight, arrow road that, you know, we would think in a logical way. I want to recognize Dr. Jill Sharkey that's also in the room, and I also want to let everyone know that in our last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, that was on Zoom, where we got the initial insight racial climate survey, at the end of that meeting, I got a text from a former superintendent who was actually watching a meeting of another school district, which I will not name, but he said that we should be very proud as a school district for continuing this work, for not losing this focus that you have spoken about, President Sims-Monton, because he was observing a school district meeting where they were undoing all of their equity work and getting rid of the DEI positions. And we're hearing that across our country, and I think that, I want to mark that while we may not be in this perfect position of having done this work in the great way, we are on a journey that is very courageous, that we have stuck to despite all the setbacks we have had, and have not lost the focus on the students that we know need the help the most. And while it's not perfect, and we want more out of this school district and more for our kids, there are school districts that are disbanding all this work, and for that, I'm proud to be sitting with this board, to be working with this cabinet, and with all our new leaders who are also bringing us different ways, and also proud to work with UCSB Healing Justice. And I want to move us forward despite, again, the setbacks that we have had. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you to come up and take a quick picture with us to commemorate this moment. Thank you.
And also, Dr., you just became a doctor. Ms. Alvarez?
This is more of a procedural. You mentioned that the safety plans are coming to us for approval. If we can, if, I'll speak for myself, if I can get those, the sooner the better, so I can start reading them, because if I get them on Friday, it's really hard to read all of them by Tuesday, and I want to make sure I do my due diligence and read that important work. So, thank you.
So we'll just make sure all the board gets that ahead of time, so they can read that. Okay. Great. Okay. All right. Thank you for that discussion, Board. Thank you. Thank you very much. So next, we'll move to H2, Report on Santa Barbara Unified District's Universal Transitional Kindergarten Program. Near and dear. Okay, who we have? Dr. Monroe? Or, okay, oh, we have Daisy. All right. Okay. Hello, Miss Daisy.
There's two of us. So good evening, Board members, and Dr. Maldonado. I am Daisy Ochoa, and I'm Acting Director of Early, Ed, and After School and Interim Principal at McKinley Elementary. And I'll pass it over to my colleague, and then we're going to tag-team tonight.
Good evening, all. Cabinet, Board members, Dr. Maldonado. My name is Veronica Binkley, and I am currently the principal and have been for quite some times of a Harding University Partnership School. But my interest and passion in early childhood education stems from over 15 years of teaching both kindergarten and first grade, several years as a literacy coach, and also several years as a early reading first coordinator. I know firsthand the impact that a strong early childhood foundation has on future success for all children. When students enter kindergarten, they do so at many different levels of development. Being kindergarten-ready means having well-developed preschool skills and being academically, socially, and physically ready for the transition into elementary school. Next slide, please. Accessing kindergarten curriculum is crucial for student success, as most children learn to read in kindergarten. Being able to sit, focus, and participate can be a developmental challenge for students who have not had any exposure to school before they enter kindergarten. Next slide, please. The kindergarten students, student en- The Kindergarten Student Entrance Profile, or KSEP, is an assessment and rating scale used in districts in Santa Barbara County. Teachers use their observations and professional judgments regarding the readiness of children whom they have observed in the classroom environment for over at least three-week period at the beginning of the school year. Research has found that KSEP ratings are predictive of children's academic achievement through grade two, almost three full years after these ratings are completed. As you can see in this slide, fewer students are rated as ready-to-go in the northern county of Santa Barbara. Next slide, please. Overall, the data indicates during the 21-22 academic year, only one out of four children, or 25% in Santa Barbara County, entered kindergarten with all of the skills and dispositions needed to fully benefit from the kindergarten classroom and curriculum. Next slide. The next few slides highlight data from the 22-23 cohort of SBUSD kindergarten students. The KSEP has 13 items linked to the social, emotional, and cognitive school readiness knowledge domains. Our district shows, data shows that over 40% of our students came to kindergarten ready-to-go. We attribute this high percentage of students who are ready-to-go to the district's TK and pre-K program on our campuses. Next slide. The next two slides look more closely at the data. The KSEP social-emotional subscale is linked to the social-emotional domains of children's school readiness. These skills include adaptive life skills, relationships with peers, self-regulation abilities, maintaining attention to task, problem-solving, and general curiosity and enthusiasm about school. Next slide. The KSEP school readiness knowledge subscale is linked to the cognitive school-ready knowledge domains of children's school readiness. These skills include recognition of and ability to write their names, appropriate language and speech development, as well as a basic understanding of numbers, colors, shapes, and letters. And I will pass the mic to my colleague, Ms. Ochoa.
So 40% is still not high enough, right? So next slide, please. So in order to get our students ready-to-go, pre-K or TK, it is important that we have that pathway for a high-quality early childhood education in the both pre-K and TK experience. Next slide, please. So we currently have, we currently serve TK in all over nine elementary sites with our current enrollment of 137. And for next year's enrollment already, so these numbers actually have currently changed. We currently have about 155 already enrolled in TK for our next 23-24 school year. And of course, we anticipate an increase in that number as a lot of our families continue to enroll between, you know, now and August. Next slide, please. One year ago, we brought forth our UTK plan that was submitted to the state, and we called out five focus areas listed here. However, with the way that we have witnessed enrollment rapidly increase, we are prioritizing three focus areas to ensure that we are prepared for our new cohort of TK students. Next slide, please. We need to align the vision and coherence, which means professional development for all, including teacher, assistants, and administrators. Development appropriate curriculum and materials that is vertically aligned from pre-K to TK. We need to ensure that all teaching staff meet the CDE-required credential along with the required 24 ECE units. We need to meet the 10:1 ratio by hiring pair educators for each TK classroom. Each TK classroom also must be Title IX compliant, which means that they need to be close to developmentally appropriate playground, the restrooms are either self-contained or easily accessible, and that rooms are close to the pickup and drop-off and the 1,300 square feet requirement. There is also an additional need for more classrooms across the district to meet the increase in enrollment for TK, which also means the need for more staff. We continue to have meetings with principals to discuss each site's enrollment and needs. We are meeting with our HR department to ensure our teachers are qualified to teach TK. And we're planning PD and ensuring that all PK and TK classrooms have the age-appropriate resources needed using our UPK state funds. One thing to note that we didn't call out on this presentation is that as more four-year-olds become eligible for TK, that means that there will be a decrease in four-year-olds in our district preschools, which would mean a decrease in enrollment. So therefore, one strategy we're trying to use is using our very high-quality preschool teachers that are already TK-qualified and have them teach our TK classrooms. Because there is no better person to teach four-year-olds than are already than some of those teachers that are already in our four-year-old classrooms. So I think that concludes just our TK updates. And so if you have any questions?
Do you have any requests to speak on this item? No requests to speak. Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you. Great report. I love, I love hearing your reports. Thank you so much. You said we have about 155 students enrolled right now for the 23-24 school year. How is the word getting out that we are currently enrolling? How do parents know?
It's already out there. Our open enrollment starts in December every year, so parents go into any of our school sites and can begin enrolling. Our flyers have already been updated and our website has already been updated. So that's without doing much outreach as it is. So as the school year gets closer then, and families just know that it's time to enroll, that's why we anticipate those numbers go up even more.
Just for contrast, when we were writing this report a couple of months ago, it was in February. And last year in February, we had 15 TKs enrolled district-wide. And at that same time, we had 136 TK students enrolled for this upcoming year. So the message, I think, is out there.
Great. That's good to hear. And also, it really shows how as a district, we have to constantly be very flexible. UTK, TK is a new program. It's something that we have to offer. And frankly, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to do that. And we have to accommodate that expenditure in our budget. We, as a community-funded district, we don't get additional funding for this. This is something that we have to do. What about facilities? How, you mentioned the need for facilities. How are we going to accommodate that need?
That's something that we're constantly, it's an ongoing discussion because we need more space. We don't have, our schools, you know, some of them can accommodate, some schools can't. And so that's, we have been ongoing conversations about, you know, preschool and are we converting some of those classrooms into a TK classroom? What does that do to the preschool space? So these are the ongoing conversations that we're having. Just to kind of go back to your question about TK, though, I wanted to remind everyone why we're increasing also is because the age eligibility has changed. So where, right now, the age eligibility for TK is to, if, you know, if you turn five by February 2nd, next year is if you're turning, if you turn five by April 2nd, you're eligible. The year after that will be June 2nd. And by the year 2025, 2026, it will be, everyone will be eligible for TK. So where, right now, we're seeing an increase. It will be, we'll see even more the following school year. So we're seeing a trend now. We're going to see it even more. So we're really going to have to start even having deeper conversations about facilities because if we're seeing it now, we're going to see it more so because more students are going to start becoming eligible.
Definitely. And staffing as well? Are we, how many openings do we have? Are you concerned about staffing for this classes?
Yeah, well, right now, I mean, as a principal, I'm looking at definitely two TKs at Harding and other sites as well. The other thing to consider is that 10:1 ratio, right? So for every 10 TK children, whether in a TK-K's combo or just a TK-straight classroom, we need to have an additional assistant in there. So some schools have space, some schools don't, and that's something we're just going to have to deal with. A lot of schools are getting some new classrooms. Harding has had a couple of brand-new classrooms built that do meet that space requirement. The space requirement is significant. It's much bigger than most of our classrooms. So, and then not only that, the state is calling for us to offer a nine-hour day so that our parents can work.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work. Yes, of course, Dr. Monroe. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. We continue to diligently be prepared, to prepare for this transition as we increase the number of TK classrooms, classes across the district. We're going to continue to work with our facilities to make sure that we do have the necessary space to ensure that, under no circumstances, that there are any delays in making sure that our student, that our teacher, that our, sorry, that our students have the necessary space to be able to be in those classrooms. So there will be no delays or issues when it comes to space availability for our TK population. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just have to first start and say, it's a good challenge to have. I mean, we already know the importance of early care. This is a good challenge to have, and I know that we're going to meet that. So again, I go back to the story that we're telling. If we're saying to our other stories that we don't have enough space, we don't, that's the story we're telling. The story is, this is a good challenge to have because that, again, looks at student outcomes. Because know, the earlier start they get, the more they're firming their foundation in those early years, they're going to be better and more able and stable throughout the years to be able to just, you know, go through life in terms of the things that they will meet. So we, I think it's a good challenge, and I think that's what we should say. It's a good challenge. Hashtag good challenge for early care and education. And then just a couple of questions. So I think you said, or maybe I misunderstood, there were four areas that you were focusing on, but you were reducing it to three? Or did I misunderstand?
So the state and the UTK plan calls out five areas, and then so we're prioritizing three focus areas. Vision and coherence is one area, and then staffing and facilities.
And what was the other two areas?
So it's vision and coherence is one area, and then staffing and, oh, the other areas that we didn't call out? Community engagement and partnerships, curriculum instruction and assessment. I mean, they're all important, right? But if, it's slide, what slide is that? It's the second to last slide, if you wanted to bring it up.
Okay, yeah.
Slide 10.
I think it's just in the stage that we are right now, these are the higher priorities. Not that the other two are not priorities. I say, I think in the stage that we are in now, these two are our top priorities, not necessarily that the other two are not priorities. Obviously, community engagements and partnerships will play a big role in the after-school care. And the curriculum instruction definitely needs to align with our pre-K and our K curriculum. So there's all of that to consider as well.
Yeah. And not to, I hope I didn't imply that, you know, that you weren't making what was the necessary priority. But what I was asking, just because I was sitting on a panel, you know, talking about childcare, talking about early care in general, so to be able to take that back, because we're going to need community help too, facilities that we may not necessarily have now. But there are facilities, because the same thing that's happening in our preschools where they're reducing the four-year-olds that are coming, then you're going to have more rooms in other preschool opportunities. So that's a partnership is what I was, my question was about that in terms of, so that's, could we help with that? Again, as you're making those other three-year priorities, can we start to look at those, you know, opportunities? And also looking at the policy change, sitting on a policy change, talking about, because we talked about as a community aid district, community-funded district, we don't get extra dollars to do, which is a mandate. Again, it's a good challenge, but I think it's also an opportunity to start to look at policy and how we, again, prioritize early care and education. Because one of my things, I haven't figured out how to do it yet, but I've been saying that I think through our budget system, that's where the money comes from, both local, state and federal, that the care and education of our children, it's an entitlement. So that we're not here, up here fighting for this from year to year, how do we do that? And so having these conversations and bringing that back, that's another level of policy that we can start to work on, you know, with our policy leaders. And so that's where you hear me saying, so that's causing this here. And where can we get the help to make sure that we meet the needs of the whole family? Because I think that's important. And I'm glad to see, again, in terms of the word is out, that's good. That means that the word about early care, the importance of it, both at home and in the community. So in your family engagement opportunities, are we, because I remember when my first, my son first came here, I think we had, we actually met with the kindergarten teachers. So, but one of the questions they had was like, how are you doing at home? So I'm asking on the family engagement process, are we engaging with parents before the kids get here and now that this, you know, letting them know that this is here to do it? I know that it's getting more kids here, but I mean, the more ready they are at home, be ready when they get here.
Yeah. I just had a meeting today with your organization, First Five, and we were talking about some of the initiatives that the First Five of California is putting forth in working with getting registration of children that are zero to three, and then wellness checks for them as well in even an Ares database. It's a possibility, right?
Yes.
And also, the partnership with First Five is there to support us in this endeavor. And there was talk about creating almost like a one-page document of a step-by-step and making sure that we're able to meet the needs that this initiative is calling for. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you for the presentation and certainly for the work. And again, hashtag, it's a good challenge to have. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Nope, they're good. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Dr. Maldonado?
I just want to thank Ms. Binkley and Ms. Ochoa for being here tonight and doing this presentation. And I know you have your school assignments in the morning, so an extra special thank you to both of you.
Okay, so we'll move to our last item of the evening, the student outcomes report, number two. Dr. Vince? Dr. Vince. I've called everybody doctors tonight, so, you know, honorary tonight.
Everyone gets a doctor tonight.
Okay, we do have three speakers for this item? Okay. So we'll hear from the speakers before you're...
So we have three speakers on item H3. We have Lupe Martinez, Ellie, and Selly Casades. Lupe, please come to the podium.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches. Ah, mi nombre es Lupe Martinez. Soy la mamá de una estudiante de la high school. Estoy aquí para apoyar la alineación de los requisitos A a la G con los de graduación. Yo creo que es importante estar al tanto e informar a los estudiantes y sus familiares sobre la importancia de los requisitos A a G. Estoy aquí para pedir al distrito que busquen una manera de informar a los padres de Santa Barbara sobre esta información. Yo soy una madre de familia afortunada porque mi hija tuvo la oportunidad de participar en el programa de FLA donde ella nos compartió la información que ellos le enseñaron. Y gracias a este programa estamos informados de la importancia que es para los estudiantes terminar con estos requisitos, para tener la oportunidad de ir a la universidad. Los padres de otras culturas necesitamos saber sobre estos requisitos especialmente porque muchos de nosotros no fuimos a la escuela en este país. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Ms. Martinez's comment was...
Ms. Martinez's comment will now be read in English. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Lupe Martinez. I am the mother of a student at high school, and I am here to support the alignment of the requirements of A through G with the graduation requirements. I believe that it is important to be up to date and to inform students and their families about the importance of the A through G requirements. I am here to ask the district to look for a way of informing parents in the Santa Barbara community about this information. I am a mother, and I am fortunate because my daughter had the opportunity to participate in a program called FLA where they shared a lot of information that they were teaching us. And so thanks to that, thanks to this program, that is the reason why we have been informed as parents of the importance and how important it is for students to finish these requirements, to be able to have the opportunity to then go to college. Parents from other cultures need to know about these requirements, especially because a lot of us didn't go to school in our own country. So it would be very helpful for us to have all of that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Muchas gracias, señora. Buenas noches. Ellie?
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Ellie. I am a student at Santa Barbara Senior High School, and I'm here as an ambassador of Future Leaders of America. I would like to give a huge congratulations to the board on raising the A through G completion rate. However, we do have more room for improvement. Ever since I was little, I had been a high achiever. This meant that when I got to high school, I had already made the decision that I wanted to graduate early. I had heard about the A through G requirements but never fully understood them. In sophomore year, I informed my counselor, I was planning on graduating junior year, and that was the last time I had spoken to them about college until I got to the beginning of my junior year, which was when I was informed that I need internships, a lot of volunteer work, and courses that reflect my interests to look good for colleges. I was frustrated. Why did they wait to tell me? I had done nothing sophomore year, and I only found out four months prior to when my college applications were due. I reached out to an organization, and they advised that I stay another year. So that's what I did. I was held back a year because my plans didn't seem important to the people who were supposed to help all students. I just wish I would have been given the right aid to guide me when I had no one to turn to.
Twenty seconds.
I strive to be the first generation college student I have worked so hard to be. From behalf of the students, we thank the district's steps to equal education because every student should have the opportunity to access higher education past the A through Gs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Selly Casades.
Good evening, school board and Santa Barbara community. My name is Selly Casades. I am the Santa Barbara community organizer for Future Leaders of America. I am here in support of our student and parent who just spoke on the alignment of A through G with the graduation requirements and SBUSD. I, well, we at FLA wanted to congratulate the board for the recent increase in A through G completion rates, and also those who played a vital role in that accomplishment. Ever since we brought up the low completion rates to the board's attention, we've started to notice and even heard conversations surrounding the A through Gs become more normalized in our community. And as a first-generation Chicanix student, it really warms my heart, but I cannot help to think, I cannot help but think about the remaining forty percent of US SBUSD students who have yet to complete the A through Gs that will make them eligible to apply to a four-year institution. So you heard from, you heard from our students and our parents who share a similar experience, but
Twenty seconds.
Thank you. They are also asking for a similar cause, to continue pushing for a college-bound culture here in Santa Barbara. So yes, past the A through Gs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Vance?
All right. So we will be giving this, our student outcomes report, number two of the slide deck. Can we go to the next slide, please? So as you noticed, we have our LCAP goals, and specifically the data that you'll be seeing tonight, that that information actually comes from both 21, 22 school year, as well as we'll have some data here that's from this current school year. We have also, this information is actually student data that's going to not only be formative and summative, but it'll be implementation data that drives our efforts. And that's why it's important to show you and tie it to our LCAP goals, because the LCAP, the LCAP goals, in order to determine that we're having success, we want to make sure that we are using the data that you'll be seeing today to, to make decisions around that. So as well as you know, we're a multi-tiered system of support, school district. Next slide. One other thing that I just wanted to share on the slide deck with you is that we have, again, just to remember last year's student enrollment numbers, as we move into Student Services data with Kenya, and her data will be from last year's information. One other tidbit to remember, CDE released some of the information that you will see today or this evening. They released it in January and February. So some of the information, as we get out of the COVID, what happened with COVID, you'll notice that, for example, the dashboard was up and running for the first time, as well as we're getting information gradually from the Department of Education. So with that being said, I would like to bring up Kenya.
Next slide. So Student and Family Services is, will be presenting information that's based on attendance and suspension, but I do want to highlight that there is so much more to students being engaged in school besides suspensions and attendance, but that is the data that's collected by the state for climate culture work. So our chronic absenteeism rates are not any different than the trends at the state, especially post-COVID. It is work for us to do. Our district rate is twenty-four point nine percent, which is around twenty-five percent. The state rate is around thirty percent. I just want to remind you, chronic absenteeism is any student that has missed ten percent or more of school from the date they enrolled. If we're talking students that are with us for the entire school year, that's a hundred and eighty days. If a student misses eighteen days of school for the school year, then they will be labeled as a chronic absentee. But the good thing about progress monitoring is that we can intervene every single day to get students to actually exit chronic absenteeism and not reach eighteen days. As you see from our data, we have five subgroups that land in the very high. Those are students who have missed twenty percent or more of the school year from the date that they were enrolled. Next slide. On this slide, you can actually see the absentee rate for those subgroups. We have our English language learners, as you can see, thirty point one percent, and I won't read the data for you. You have that at your disposal. So as we focus on chronic absenteeism, it isn't enough to say just come to school. We really have to look at what is keeping students from attending school. As we know, that could be transportation, it could be illness, it could be life circumstances. So we want to make sure we have close relationships with our families so that they're communicating with us and partnering and making sure that students are attending school every day that school's in session. Next slide. As an MTSS-focused district, it isn't enough to look at the student outcome. We are looking at implementation data as well, because we want to do the things we do well, and if we're getting the results, we want to scale them up and really focus in on those. You will see moving forward, as we come through with reports on the work that we're doing and how we hold ourselves accountable, is the results of the adults, right? That and what are the adults doing to support students and families? Student and Family Services will be focused on monitoring our attendance review conferences. We met with the deans and assistant principals about how do we streamline and coordinate across the district so that we're all holding group attendance review conferences so that we can really impact the largest amount of families? And when families move between schools and grade levels, they're already been introduced to the expectation of how to interact with students, or with the site. An attendance review conference brings families in and introduces them and has them in space with all the key personnel at the school. That would be the admin, the attendance secretary, a counselor for counselors on campus, our family engagement liaison, so that we're building community with our students, even in families, even as we talk about attendance. Also looking at our family classes, how are we building capacity in our families to know what to expect from this education system that we have all elected to work in as public servants, but also could be very difficult to navigate? And letting them know about the options that are available across the district. Attendance is more than that letter that says your student has been identified. It is looking at the solutions for why kids are not in school. Our district youth outreach workers, this is data that every position that's under Student and Family Services support, report the fifth of every month for the previous month. So we're monitoring this data every single Tuesday when we meet as a lead team on how we can change in the moment. That's really what progress monitoring is. It's not to, as the state does, look a year behind, but it's in the moment, right now, how can we adjust and change so the experiences of our students and families are better? Our mental health, we also are monitoring where are the calls coming from? How many crisis calls? Is there a particular school or time or month where we got more calls than others? So that we can plan accordingly and make sure we have supports and services in place? And if we can't provide them, that we partner with community so that they're there. That is the type of implementation data that we want you as a board to be looking forward as we come and present with you, because we really are holding each other accountable, but more importantly, holding ourselves accountable so that we can change the trajectory of our students in the education system. Next slide. This is our suspension rate. It is low. Two percent is not a high rate. I just want to remind the board, suspension in and of itself is not a problem. It's when it's overused or abused, and particularly when specific students populations maybe are experiencing more. There are echo violations that require a suspension. A suspension might be because a student is a perceived danger to himself or others and/or may disrupt the school environment. And so a time away or days away, the due process that's set up is a suspension. We can't ask kids, just don't come to school. We can't say that because it's their right, not a privilege. So when we are telling students they can't come to school, it's only through a suspension or a 504 IEP plan where we actually limit their day. So a suspension is, in itself, is not the bad thing. It's the overuse of it, which is why we monitor that data. We're at two point three percent. The state's at three percent as an average, so we are below the state's average, and we're monitoring this data closely. As you can see, we don't have any student groups that are in very high or high. We have some student groups that are in medium, and we are monitoring our other means of correction as part of that data. Next slide. Again, these are those special populations. You can look at the individual special population suspension rates here. You have that data for you to reflect on. Next slide. Next slide. These are just those population groups. Next slide. Here are expulsion rates. Again, we expel students when they either commit a BIG five, which is possession of a firearm, selling of drugs, brandishing a knife, sexual assault or battery, or a possession of an explosive, which is the federal definition, or when we find that students are a continuing danger to themselves or others, or that other means of correction aren't feasible. The BIG five and those two secondary findings are the only way students are expelled from school, and these are our expulsion rates. Not, as you can see from the state level, we're not too far above them at that point one percent because that is the last measure for us. Next slide. As we move forward, again, implementation data around everything we do, not only the student outcome data from Student and Family Services, we're monitoring for students to have reached that last tier of discipline. Have we had team meetings? Have we, is there a support plan in place for that student? Did we look at if there are other placements where that student could, would succeed? Because sometimes it is change of scenery. Have we engaged with the family as partners in changing student behavior? Have we explored alternatives to suspension? Because it isn't just about the consequence, it's about teaching the expected behavior, and that takes a lot of work. Have we, in our district, we have decided to operate as an internal wraparound team, which means our family liaison, our counselor, our mental health clinicians, admin. We really get around the table with our youth outreach workers and say, what does this student need and who can take which pieces of that puzzle? As you know, as an MTSS district, it is, one of our priorities is identifying ways that all staff can contribute to student wellness and success. And so this is our implementation data in Student and Family Services so that we can monitor how are we doing this work on a, on a weekly basis. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to my co-leader.
Thank you, Kenya. For the STAR reading in grades three to six, the June 4th, 2021 results show that forty-four percent of students met or exceeded standard. But a closer look, if you look closer, it reveals that the STAR data from March 9th, that last column, 2023, shows that forty-six percent of students met or exceeded standard. Students are on the right trajectory and performing at a higher rate, especially given the fact that the new standards and teaching and learning is still being introduced and assessed. So if you look, we're still, we're at forty-six percent right now, and that's as of taking an assessment on March 9th. But if you look at 2021 and 2022, in June, of June 4th and May 28th of 2022, we're performing at forty-four percent and forty-five percent respectively. So we're on the right path, and we still have, like I said, days to go in the school year. Next slide, please. So for STAR math in grades three to six, for June 4th, 2021, the results again reveal that twenty-three percent of students met or exceeded standard. But at first glance, it shows the STAR results from May 28th, 2022 to March 9th, 2023. You'll see that there's a two percent decrease. However, again, we're looking at May 28th, 2022 versus March 9th of 2023. So there are still three months of teaching and learning still to occur. So projecting out, you should see an increase in what that would look like toward the end of the school year. So for STAR reading, next slide, please. Thank you. For STAR reading, grades three through six, from June 4th, 2021 to March 9th of 2023, I just want to highlight our socioeconomically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, emergent multilingual learners, and our reclassified fluent English proficient student groups. And what you'll see, these are our largest, some of our largest populations, and they are outpacing the performance when we look at standard met or exceeded from June 4th, 2021, and June, and May 28th, 2022. While the latest data sample is only from March 9th, you'll see that we're already at sixty-one percent. If we just look at required, reclassified fluent English proficient, our RFEPs, they're at sixty-one percent, and that's just March 9th. So we still have, again, the rest of the year to go, and we're still, we're outperforming where we were from June 4th as well as May 28th. Next slide, please. For math, for the STAR math, grades third through six, from March 9th, 2023, again, looking at that last column, the findings show that our socioeconomically disadvantaged students with disabilities, emergent multilingual students, as well as our reclassified fluent English proficient student groups are performing on par when compared with the end-of-year data from June 4th and May 28th, 2022. And given that we have still about fifty days of instruction and new standards to be introduced, so again, we're on the right path. However, this data, in no way does it take away from the fact that work remains to be done. We own these results, and we'll continue to do the necessary work to ensure our student achievement. And at this time, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Lynn.
Good evening. And so on my first slide, I'd like to show you just our comparison, Santa Barbara Unified School District, our graduation rates and our college and career rates as they compare to the county. to the county as well as the state. And if you take a look closer, you'll see that Santa Barbara Unified School District exceeds the county by 2.2%, and we exceed the state by 4.8%. Something that you'll see here, maybe the fifth column over, says graduates meeting UC CSU requirements. And so as our student and our families, we're talking about A to G. That A to G relates directly to the UC, University of California, and California State University requirements. And I'll show you a little bit more detail on what comes in each of one of those categories. Next slide. This next slide shows us the progression of our rates. And so if you take a look, we have 2019, then we go to 2021, so we skipped that COVID year, and then up to current times. And again, notice that this progression over the years, there's been a gradual increase of graduation rate as well as a gradual increase for our UC CSU requirements that our students are meeting. Next slide. Here, we've really delineated our students by our subgroups and taking a look specifically at some of the subgroups that that stand out. And that would be our students that are African American student group, our Hispanic Latino student group, two or more racist student groups, as well as our socially economically disadvantaged group. All of those groups are exceeding the state and the county graduation rate, and we are gradually increasing each year. In the additional columns, we see students earning a seal of biliteracy. Those are students that are biliterate, able to be successful in two languages or more. And then we have students earning a Golden State Seal of Merit diploma. When our students receive that, that is meaning they're excelling on the CASP exam as well as in their academic areas. So looking at their core academic areas in English, math, social studies, science. And so their criteria that they need to meet, and then they also take the state test. And if they're meeting or exceeding those rates, they get the seal of uh by uh seal of merit diploma. Next slide. And this is a slide, we work with the University of California, and they have what we call a transcript evaluation service. And within that, we're able to pull some data. And so if you see, we're talking about A to G. And so these are the categories of A to G and students meeting. So our students have to have a certain amount of classes in the history category. They have to have four years of English. They have to have so many years of math, lab science, a non-English language, and other A to G, the elective areas. And so these are the key areas that our student and our parents were talking about, educating our students and families in regards to what these are so that our students know what classes they need to take. This is the 11th grade cohort and our progression in these key areas. So those areas in blue are where we are succeeding and where you see there's gradual progression in each one of these areas. The areas in gold are areas where our students may receive a D or fail in those in those key areas. So if a student receives a C or better, they meet the criteria for that course. If they receive a D or fail, they do not meet that criteria. That's it. I'll turn it over to my next colleague, Denise.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm here to present information about our elementary and secondary education students for emergent multilingual learners, specifically that group. If you look at the data, can you pull up the first slide, please? If you look at the data, the one on the left-hand side is for the 2020-21 school year. During that time, 11.68% of our students that are emergent multilingual learners were proficient. No data was available for the previous years of 1920, 2019 and 2020, as well as 2018 and 2019. Due to the pandemic, we were not testing our students, we were utilizing other methods to assess our students throughout the year. If you look at the right-hand side, we have the 21-22 data for all of our students that are emergent multilingual learners. And if you look at that center circle, the number is 19% proficient. That's 331 students. When you compare the previous year, the 21, 2021 to 21-22, we had a 7% increase. That's one of our celebrations to share there. The second celebration, if you look at the top, that SB Unified proficiency levels are higher than the state proficiency, and the state proficiency was 15.45% for that year for 2021-22. Next slide. I want to give you a closer look at this data. Keep in mind that this is just for emergent multilingual learners. And the areas that I want to highlight are the well-developed, somewhat-developed, and beginning-to-develop. This information, I want to highlight that the areas of need as well as the areas of success. The four circles represent listening, reading, speaking, and writing, which are the four domains in the California English Language Proficiency Assessment. And if you look at the percentage, the 56%, I want to highlight the speaking part, 56% of our students are well-developed in that area. That's an area of celebration. The area we do need to continue to work on are the writing, the reading, and the listening as well. Next slide. Now let's look at the reclassification data. For those of you who are not familiar with reclassification, I want to highlight that there are different parts, four requirements for reclassification. One is the English Language Proficiency, the LPAC, which I just described earlier, that has four domains. The Performance and Basic Skills, which is the STAR that Dr. Monroe and also Dr. Sheffield have shared before, the STAR results previously for all of our students. Academic Evaluation on the Report Card, which is the students' grades, and also apparent notification and consultation. So those are the requirements. Now, take a look at this data. We have it for 2019-2020 on the right-hand side, which is 13.7% of our students reclassified, 11.5, 14.7. And to this date, our data is 212 students, which is 11.6%. Again, notice that this is not the end of the year. We have another batch of data that we need to take a look and reflect on for for those four domains. But I want to share with a little bit more about this data we have here. Is that when our students are reclassified, they have to have those four criteria met. This is the only group, I want to highlight this, for our emergent multilingual learners, only group that has to have those requirements met in order to be reclassified as English proficient. I want to compare that to, for example, the California State Assessment. If a student takes that assessment and scores below standard, that student moves on to the next grade level. Not a lot changes with that student. Or we encourage the student to do better the following year. We look at data at the end of the year. But for a student who is reclassified, it is very different. It is, there's criteria that they need to make sure that they meet in order to be reclassified. But I'll I'll share a little bit more when we look at the following data. Next slide. This is a tool we use here at Santa Barbara. This is going back to what Steve Vans mentioned, implementation data. This is a progress monitoring tool that we use here at Santa Barbara Unified. It is used by staff to support students meet the reclassification criteria. This allows us to create an individual profile for each of our emergent multilingual students. This is an actionable tool that can be used immediately. But I want us to be, have, I want to warn us that this is not a data, this is not data that can be used for annual comparison purposes. Why? Because the data from last year, students who reclassified will not be part of this cohort. So we cannot compare how we did last year to what we did the year before. So if you look at the the picture at the top, that was last year's data. And the data at the bottom with the colored, as you noticed, we've improved our practices. We now have another way to share our data with our school sites in which, if I look at a student with a Profile A, for example, that is a student who's ready to be reclassified. The LPAC proficiency status is a yes. STAR reading proficiency is a yes, and ELA grade proficiency is yes. That student is ready to be reclassified. But when you look at, for example, a Profile E, the yellow area, LPAC proficiency is a no, but the STAR reading is a yes, and the ELA grade is a no. So it allows us to look at data. Another piece is, when you look at the first column, the LPAC proficiency, that only happens once per year. The STAR reading, as you saw in the report by Dr. Monroe, it happens multiple times per year. In the grade, multiple times per year. So as you can see, the students, our emergent multilingual learners, have to, for lack of a better term, jump through so many hoops in order for them to be reclassified. So I just wanted to highlight that. Next slide. This data here represents the work that has, that we as a district have complete accomplished over the last year to ensure that our emergent multilingual learners are afforded a viable TK-12 comprehensive ELD curriculum supported by strong professional learning for educators. We recognize that the next phases of work will be to adopt and implement interim assessments to better gauge uh gauge a students, how students are progressing between our annual summative, LPAC test administrations. Further, we need to develop specialized instruction support in our secondary space for our long-term English learners, emergent multilinguals. These are the students that have been in US schools for six or more years and have not yet reclassified as English proficient. LTOs are required specialized English language development instruction and supports that are separate from those of our emergent multilinguals because these students have been in our schools for six or more years. They have other needs than, for example, our newcomers or students who have been in a US school for two to three years. And lastly, we are prioritizing our work around these two important needs, the assessment and also the support for our long-term English learners in coming years to look, look forward to reporting at our, in our board report about the areas in which our students are progressing. But going back to this data here, we wanted to provide you a snapshot of how are we doing in terms of curriculum, formative assessment, LPAC interim assessment, and tier-two interventions and enrichment. For newcomers and LTOs, as you notice, we're checking some boxes before, in some areas for elementary, junior high, and high school. So we need to take a deeper look at each individual group, elementary, junior, high, and high school, but also the groups within those groups, which are our newcomers, our students who have been here for a few years, and our LTOs, which have been in US schools for more than six years. And that concludes my report.
Whoops. Again, just to remind you that we will be providing a thorough EML report when we get closer to June and into June. So we get all of that data, the LPAC data, the reclassification rates, so we could truly see what's what's happening within the schools. So, all right. So just to remind those of you on the board who were at the time approved our launching of the of of the rollout of MTSS. So just to remind you that we we partnered with SWIFT last year, and that was our first year launching the multi-tier systems, a system of supports. And we also invested in MTSS TOSSAs, and we also invested in by assistant principals and so on. So we we did take our one-time funds and invest those monies into this, into this launch. And we had nine schools in particular as part of Cohort One that did this process. This year, we had all schools involved, both we had a Cohort One and a Cohort Two. And then next year will be, it should be tying up the loose ends and moving us forward so we would have really locked into position our implementation process across the district. I just wanted to again remind you of that as we looked at this data and as we're moving forward. Ms. Edison.
Next slide. So as we co-lead the MTSS efforts, and and you are included in that co-leadership, we have highlighted some MTSS practices as a district that we are moving forward with as our consistent commitments. We can do all of these things, but we're really focusing on the high leverage practices. I've introduced this slide to you before, so I won't read them all. But I do want to highlight the using data to guide decisions, use of ensuring that all staff have an opportunity to contribute, seeking input is important for us, and then identifying and removing barriers. It's not enough to identify them and get a PhD in repeating them. It's how do we align our systems so that we are removing those barriers so that the system is better off because of our work? It is not enough to implement MTSS. It's about how do we make it part of how we do business in Santa Barbara so that it sustains beyond all of us? So we've moved from having MTSS in some areas of our district being thought of as intervention to really looking at our tier-one focus. You'll see consistent commitments come across for the 23-24 school year that's really on high leverage practices and frameworks, which are building relationships. We're talking about how do we design instruction so that all learners access it and can demonstrate in a multitude of ways what they've learned. And when we say all learners, we mean all learners. That's our EML students, our special education students, our gen ed students, our FIBO4 students. We are really looking at how do we build the capacity so that we use data to backmap and 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 provide high-quality instruction. So we're excited about the MTSS work, and it builds every year. And we're understanding you as a board, appreciate and understand when you use MTSS language because MTSS is what we all do. It is not something particular to any one of our divisions. We are co-leading this work because it's how we build a system that sustains and meets the needs of all kids through the lens of equity. And the other part is really partnering with our families. And so we are focused on how do we engage and build their capacity so they come to the table as shared partners with us in decision-making and not just a number on the log. So we appreciate you attending to us in this presentation tonight. We ask that you become our accountability partners as we also hold you accountable for this work as we are moving and building systems for kids.
Does that conclude the report? Okay, all right. I'm with you. I was, I wasn't adding anymore.
That concludes our report.
Thank you, thank you. Board members, comments, questions? Is Alvarez.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report, for all the work that goes into it, all the details. And thank you for answering my questions that I emailed ahead of time. I have, I want to ask a clarifying question, Mr. Vans. So last year, you gave us a report, progress report on student at center goals.
Yes.
Is this the same as this one or is it different? Because this one had La Cumbre Junior High, San Rojo Junior High. It was, it had, it was a little bit different and it had more data.
It was.
So it's different.
So the report that we gave today, yes, it is different. So what we've been focusing on is really tightening up our systems in terms of, let me see if I can clarify this one more time. The data that you had from last year was actually, I know that we we incorporated quite a bit of STAR data into that. And that's what we were using to determine what was happening within schools. Now that we're moving beyond, that was, again, part of the issue with COVID, which was we we were relying heavily on our data system internally, including our testing. So if you remember, we we opted out of CASP when we returned back from school. I think that was 2021. So we didn't take CASP, instead we did STAR. 21-22, we we kept going, and we did take CASP, and we did STAR. But we we leaned on the STAR information there as well. What we did this year was look back and determine what do we truly need in order to inform not only you, but inform our community of what what's happening. And like I said, for example, you saw the information. And like I said, for example, you saw the information regarding the graduation rates as well as the UC system. That information actually came from the state, but that hit the system at the beginning of February of this year. So anyway, we wanted to bring everyone up to date with that.
So when will we be getting information? I like to know about the junior highs, like you did last year.
Okay.
So whether it's, you wait for when the state, the CASP comes out, whatever. This was very helpful. It helped me understand a little bit better the challenges that we face and the opportunities for growth, and also the celebration of the steps that we're making. So I'm not asking for a full board report. What I'm saying is if this is something maybe that you and I can meet, I'm willing to do that.
Well, I do have good news. So what we are doing right now is the testing window for the, for junior highs are happening at this moment. And that'll be closing, we're looking at closing that by the end of this week. So we could supply the board with the data that we were able to gain from the STAR assessment, so.
Thank you, appreciate that. Then I have a couple of other questions. In the chronic absenteeism, I don't know if you read the report that CSBA put out. I mean, this is an issue that the whole state is facing. And I'm wondering if we have any idea of any patterns that we are seeing? I mean, COVID changed the way people view school. So maybe people are taking more trips because they didn't take trips during COVID? Or I'm not really sure if we're seeing a pattern as to the reasons of why students are absent.
Before I pass this to Ms. Edison, I can, just as a reminder of what happened last year, we had Delta and then Omicron. If you remember, we had a high percentage, and it was a long period of time. So you'll notice that the chronic absenteeism is high in almost every school district.
Everywhere.
Yeah, so Ms. Kenya or Ms. Edison?
Ms. Kenya.
So anecdotally, we can talk about transportation. We do have transportation being a big issue for students getting to school. It also is, we don't have a lot of options if you're not a comprehensive school campus student. And what we know during COVID is some students thrived at home, independent study, working alone, and then returning to the campus was not their biggest fit. So we're talking about how do we meet the needs of all learners when we really don't have programming for all learners? So that, we are seeing that in the data. And then there is just the illness or students not coming to school. So in our new practice, and we're rolling around with attendance review conferences, we want to drill down to be able to present the data on why kids aren't coming to school, not just the legal definitions that allow students to be excused, but really drilling down and being able to run a query to say, oh, this family didn't come because of transportation. It's this school site, so transportation is an issue there. And so that's information we're looking for, that's implementation data we're looking to look forward to for next year.
Great, thank you. And regarding the, I'm glad to see that we're making progress, even though it's small progress, but it's progress, and we have to celebrate that. And I would like for us to aspire to higher percentages. Forty-seven percent, it's good, but it's not good enough. We need to do more. We need to help the students. This is the only chance they have. They're only in first grade one year, they're only second. They need a lot of help. And it's, thank you, you said, we are your partners in accountability. We, I hold myself accountable, and we hold each other accountable. You're absolutely right about that. And we need to find ways to help these kids. Let's celebrate the forty percent, and let's look at the sixty percent. What happens to the students that didn't graduate from high school? What happens to them, do we know? That's a real question. I'm wondering, do we know?
So we do our absolute best to make sure that we follow these students. So if we have a senior that may be at a place where they are not going to make it in June, that's why we have that summer graduation. So we are following them. And then we have additional programs to allow them to even graduate, even after that fourth year. So La Cuesta offers that opportunity for them also. So when we get to that, it's a smaller population of students, but we are really fine-tuning and working with them to address their needs to ensure that they get that high school diploma.
And the young lady who spoke today, she says she wasn't aware of what she needed. And, you know, she named herself as a high achiever. She named herself that. So she probably had more awareness of resources than other students who may not have that awareness. And I know you're working very hard, and I know this is on your radar. I want us to keep on that, right? To make sure that we help as many students. I mean, the counselors were here from Dos Pueblos and other places. I don't know who has meetings with counselors, but it'd be great to know what are they doing to reach the students? And what can we do different to help these students? That would be good to know. I mean, I look at these numbers, and I'm happy that we're making progress. Don't take me wrong, I acknowledge that. And I also know that there's so much more work to be done. We are a little bit higher than the state. The state is not doing a good job. We can do better than the state. We're Santa Barbara Unified. We can do better, and we should strive to do better. So thank you, thank you for listening to me. So now, this is a real question for Denise, Ms. Alvarado. You mentioned you cannot compare the data from the previous year. I do compare the data. And I'm sure that there's some of the same students, not all of them, but some of the same students are still with us. And with this new tracking system that you have, my question is, are you seeing an improvement, those students? And I know you haven't been in the district for a long time, so maybe that's not a fair question to you. If we had students that were in Profile E, for example, that passed the STAR, their ELA grade proficient, and they're having passed LPAK, do we know what portion of the LPAK they didn't pass? And how are we helping them to make sure they pass next year? Because it's only once a year, and that's a hard test.
Yes, we can definitely identify where the student has the largest gap or where they're stuck in an area. And sometimes students feel that, keep in mind, students take this test, LPAK, year after year after year. So just like the CASP, emergent multilinguals not only take the CASP, they also take the LCAP. And so they keep taking it year after year. Sometimes we do have a small percentage of students who may not see the importance. And so we will continue year after year to share with students about the importance of making sure they take that test seriously, because this is part of the reclassification criteria. The other area is teachers have access to information about their proficiency levels. So as a teacher, I know what level my students score. So if out of my, all of my students in my classroom, and I have, let's say, three to five emergent multilingual learners, I know where they scored, I know their grade, and I know where the gap is. So we are building capacity within our sites, within our teachers, administration, and counselors to help us with that support so that we're supporting the students not only in the classroom, but outside of the classroom as well.
And also, at the last year's discussion, I had asked about LPAK prep. And I know every, every school's probably doing their own thing. I don't know. How is that going? Is that happening?
Yes, it is. It is happening. I can have more information. Ms. Pilhofer is leading that space along with the rest of our teams at each of our sites. We do have EML leads. We do have administration at each of our sites who are supporting in that area. So more to come at the next report. But we are, we did listen to the recommendations of having LPAK, LPAK support and practice to ensure that our students were familiar with the test they were about to take.
Yes, and as Ms. Sims-Mouton was mentioning about our black student population, that we need to do that targeted intervention, that targeting support. This is the same issue. We have to do that targeted support, follow those students, make sure that we're doing whatever we can do to support them. Here in the data, Profile H, and by the way, thank you, Dr. Monroe, for doing this. It was great, very helpful. So thank you and your team. Profile H, it shows that we have actually an increase of EML students six years or more than the previous year. So I don't know if those, maybe those are students who enrolled in our district?
It could be that. We can, at the next report, at the end of the year, in June, when we have the EML report, we'll take a look at that information so that we can provide the growth over the years for our students so that it's not just year, from one year to the next, but what is the trajectory of our emergent multilinguals in our district from elementary to junior high to high school and up to graduation?
And you'll bring that, when will you bring that?
June.
June, okay. Then I'll save all my other questions till June. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions, board members? Ms. Meadows?
Just real quick, thank you so much for the presentation. I learned a lot from it. I really appreciated, you know, the explanation about the EMLs and how hard it is to pass and stuff. And I know you guys are on it. I know the school intervention staff is on it. I asked Ms. Edison about a student, and she knows right off and stuff. So thank you so much for the excellent job you're doing.
Thank you.
Additional comments? I just have a quick question. First of all, thank you for the energy at this time of the hour. I really liked it. Oh, there you go, nope. Didn't see you.
It's okay, I know, it's late. Fading a little. This is probably just a really silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Why is LPAK only offered once a year? Is, I'm looking at these numbers, and it looks like it is the one requirement that most of our EML students are struggling with. And if you only get one opportunity a year, and you don't pass it, then waiting a whole nother year is not great. And so who makes that decision? Why is it one year? Maybe there's a good reason.
You are absolutely right, and this is a state decision. So it is, the state of California determines the LPAK, and it's a summative data once a year, just like the CASP. So we do know that there are, there's inequity for our emergent multilingual learners that we don't have control over at the individual districts or sites or individual schools. But that is something that at the state level, we do need to continue to voice that concern, not only from the board, administration, teachers, because that is something that has been there for many years.
Thank you for that.
And I'll tell you from my own personal experience, I was an emergent multilingual learner who took that LPAK multiple years until I became reclassified.
And so thank you for that. In thinking about this board's advocacy committee that we have, I personally would like to express that that's one area that I think that we should be doing some advocacy with our state representatives, because there is a lot of inequity in that. So thank you. Just thank you all. I know, looking at some of this data, we have some areas to celebrate, but we also, I think it's a good reminder that there's a lot more work to be done. But I mean, I've only been on the board for a few months, and I've been able to ask questions about, okay, what are we doing on this? What are we doing? There's a lot of really encouraging work going on in this school district. And I know that looking at some of this data, if that's all you looked at and you didn't have context for all of our other efforts, it would be pretty easy to get pessimistic. But I'm feeling really optimistic. And I think that where we are going and our goals that we're setting for ourselves, it means we don't get complacent. It means that, yes, accountability. And I appreciate Ms. Edison's comment that as a board, we need to be really intentional with our language to make sure that we're using the same language, we're speaking the same message, that we are embracing MTSS the same way that every board meeting, I'm hearing the same language. We went on campus visits, and I'm hearing the same language. I'm hearing MTSS. And so I think it's a challenge on us, and I'll speak for myself. I've not met that mark to this point, but I will take up the challenge. And I will be a little more intentional with how I'm, the language I'm using and how I'm framing some of these topics. So I appreciate that. Yeah, I think as we are looking to next year, and we're talking about goal settings and expectations, I am really going to look forward to us getting some of these numbers up and really following up on some of the conversations and some of the plans that we have in our district. Particularly just, I, EMLs, A through G for some of our subgroups. I'm really curious to hear kind of, where is this? Excuse me. So when I see that our Latino students, we got an increase, but we're still at forty-seven and a half percent. That is something that really I want to focus on. When I'm looking at our EML students and supporting them, I'm looking at, one, talking about advocacy, we have over twelve hundred homeless youth in our school district. That breaks my heart. So I look forward to working with the cabinet and the board and Dr. Maldonado to really talk about getting more information for myself on these work efforts so that I can meet that mark of messaging and talking to what we are doing and making sure that we're holding each other accountable to make progress on these. But thank you for all of this hard work. I know a lot of work goes into this, but it's so helpful. And I just want to express my gratitude to the whole cabinet, Dr. Maldonado. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so thank you. I would echo the points, Mr. Bennet. Did you have anything you want to say? I'm going to need y'all to be, you know, active, like I want to say something, so I don't look over you now.
I just, I concur with what I just heard. I appreciate having this kind of data is absolutely critical. Understanding the complexities of it is critical. There's nothing that you can put down in a PowerPoint or on a four-page document that really tells the whole story of what's going on. Telling the story is a big part of it, and I think you're doing a great job of it. I'm anxious to see what we can do to keep making the improvements. Seems like we're on the right track. And thank you for all of the work. I do have one simple question. I hesitate to ask, but Dr. Monroe, maybe you can answer this. When you talk about a STAR assessment that is on March 9th instead of June, and you're comparing like June 2022 to March of 2023, we'll have another in June?
Well, for the June, for the June assessment, that would be then the CASP. That would be our CASP. But in previous years, yes, that is what they have done. The assessment calendar for this year does not call for, in grades three through six, they'd be taking the CASP. Kinder through second would be taking the STARS.
The STAR, okay.
Yes.
As we, as we were leaning in on the implementation data, what you're not seeing with the numbers, but inside the system itself, what our elementary schools are doing is with the March 9th data, they go into the system. They could see, for example, Steve is not achieving this standard and this standard. And they drill down into the specifics. So they're really using the STAR data in terms of as a diagnostic tool, even in March. But ultimately, the decision was that once we got to the end of the school year, the CASP, which is smarter balance, that would be the summative data that we'd be using as we move forward into the next year. One other thing to keep in mind, we will be assessing the students who will be going to summer school on the STAR data so we can continue to do this type of diagnostic tool and like measuring, seeing what's going on.
Are you finding that the STAR is satisfactorily aligned to the CASP?
We actually, we did an analysis of that last year, and we did it a few years ago, and it's pretty close. So for now, we're using it. But we're also having conversations about, is this going to be our progress monitoring tool as we go into next year or the following year? is this going to be our progress monitoring tool as we go into next year or the following year? So we're always keeping our eyes.
Thank you.
Just one piece to add with respect to STAR and summer school. There will be two assessments, one at the beginning of summer school and then one at the conclusion of summer school. So students that attend summer school will be assessed twice for English and for ELA and math, beginning and end.
Good, thank you.
Dr. Maldonado, did you have?
Yes, I just want to say that in the SWF model, we talk about the district being the point of intervention and the school being the point of transformation. And so what we're showing you today is our data reports on what is happening as a district oversight of overall schools and what's happening with our students. We do know, and we didn't report to you today, so many of the different things you've mentioned, Mr. Escovedo, that are happening at the school site, along with, you know, other formative assessments that teachers use to inform their instruction. So I just want to acknowledge that there's a lot of other work that is happening in this area, and I want to thank our principals and others who are also leading this work who are not here. And then as we think about that transformation, some of the things that we learned from the listening tours are the needs, the need for new curriculum in many areas, which has been adopted for EMLs just this year for the first time, and then hoping to also adopt a new literacy curriculum in, you know, in the couple of weeks or maybe next month, as we try to get some consensus from all of our stakeholders in our teachers' union and our teacher group that's part of the instructional council. So just that difference in reporting out to you here, it'll be impossible for us to tell you everything that's happening, but definitely want to mark that this is part of that intervention work that we do at this level. Thank you.
Ms. Menos, did you want, did you have any comments? Okay. I just want to make sure. So I just want to echo those comments. Again, I started to say thank you for the energy that's here. I really just liked the handoff, my co-leaders, so we're in the tri-leaders with you too, so we want to be part of your leadership as well. And, but I do have a question, and I want to be able to, as I talked about earlier, being reelected to the delegate assembly, and this issue with regards to the LPAC. So I think that's something we can discuss in our policy and our legislation committee, that newly formed one, to see how we can, again, draft some talking points or even start to draft some legislation, working with our leaders. So I certainly think that we can do, I was making a note too, that's an opportunity to do that. So I want to talk to you a little bit more as to what that looks like and what needs, what language needs to change. And then I would just like to see the LPAC. I have no idea what it is. I mean, the difficulty is, you know. So I would love to see it, and I'm sure to share with the board too, just what does that look like? I hear that it's hard, but I don't know that it is, so.
We'll make sure to provide a little sneak peek of what it is required for of our EML learners, which is something that we also shared with our teachers, because it's not easy. And I've done that exercise previously. I know Ms. Pilhofer, leading this space of emergent multilingual learners, has done that as well. So we will continue to do that, but we'll give you a sneak peek of what would the LPAC for a specific grade, for a specific question would look like in this, one of the four domains that I spoke about earlier, just to get a little insight into what that looks like.
Yeah, and there's five criterias that they have to meet to be reclassified?
There's four.
Four?
Yes.
And did you mention those or are they in the?
Yes.
Okay, you don't have to repeat it. Okay, but yeah, I just wanted to take it to that next level, literally go to that next level about advocating for that. Again, as we look at these students, and it's old news, right? So we're in a new era, so we need to be able to move that. And I would just lastly say that, having been here now seven years, I can see, although we've made little progress or different things, and we had this big old thing called COVID, and it really did change our world of how we do it differently, but I also see the approach that we're taking. So the more the assessments tools that we have, they're going, they're doing exactly what they want, what we want. It's raising that data for us to then apply the new approaches that we're looking at and doing. So yes, it looks like we're not doing something yet, but there's so much of all the intricacies that are going on that the data, that the way you're presenting it and the assessments tools that you're using, that it's raising that. So now we have that, if you will, the action steps to be able to take with this new data, what does it look like? This is much clearer, and over time, we've just, you know, we've improved it over time. So no against anything else prior to that, but I just want to appreciate just the open mindedness to, how do we look at it differently? How do we present it differently? Therefore, we are able to act differently on it, so. I just want to appreciate that and acknowledge that, but I do want to follow up and make sure that we get something that I can take to the delegate assembly to start to make some change regarding that. So that concludes, I think, thoughts. We didn't, are we good there? Okay, we're getting ready to roll this out today, roll out tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so we didn't have any items that we needed to return. We have the coming events. You have that on your agenda. You can list those. I didn't see on there, but isn't there the VADA groundbreaking that's happening this week? It's tomorrow, okay, tomorrow. I'm sure we'll show where we're supposed to be, but that's coming out tomorrow. And future agenda items, where are we on those? Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, the enrollment report, I think it's been on there since October. Enrollment report by site on future agenda items, and the year's almost over. So I'd like to see that brought in May. Would that be possible? It's, I mean, I'm sure you already have the data. So enrollment is decreasing statewide, as we know. So I, when I, my goal is to get a better understanding of our enrollment in Santa Barbara. If, it would be really good to get last fiscal year current and what are you projecting? To see that pattern, so those three years, or even match the budget year, you know, current in two years. I think that would be really helpful to understand that our enrollment is decreasing and the impact that it has in the overall district, or it might have in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Got that direction in terms of those pieces. And I appreciate you connecting that too, because sometimes we'll ask for something, but we're not connecting to what we ultimately want. So we want to be that as a board. We're asking for this, but to give better direction to the staff, what is it that we're trying to connect to? So, and I just want to be, did you have?
I have one more question. The joint meeting with Santa Barbara City Council, has a date been set?
Sandra, or the other, can you remind me where we are with the dates?
Oh, she's applauding.
In May?
So we are waiting to hear back for a May date.
I knew they had changed some things. I know they were dealing with that big thing called housing. They've had special meetings going on, so they're like, okay, you're not a priority in terms of that. But okay, so thank everybody for a wonderful meeting. I want to be mindful that our next meeting is next week, April eighteenth, right here in the boardroom. So thank you again, board members. Thank you, staff, administrators. And if you're still out there on virtual land, thank you for attending. Have a nice evening.